Hi, I'm Eric Asendorf, Sound Financial Advisors at Jenny Montgomery Scott in Falmouth. I've been helping people plan for their retirement for more than 30 years. I would like you to ask yourself what retirement means to you and is it the same one you visualized five or 10 years ago? Whether you're thinking retirement or you're already retired, it's time to take a fresh look at your resources. Jenny's Retirement Income Evaluator, our new innovative tool, gives you a clear picture of your current retirement situation. The tool lets you see various retirement scenarios, helps to confidently prepare a plan, determines your potential retirement income, and provides solutions to how to make it last for your lifetime.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers so much for a fun-filled, yet affordable, family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with ramp and dock, free rowboats and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. You'll enjoy our attractive waterfront and beachside accommodations, so visit us online at gogreenharbor.com.
Invite the audience to join us as we say a pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Officially, the board has returned from executive session very briefly. The litigation issue we were hoping to resolve, we did not have a signed agreement on, and so we met for about 10 seconds and then adjourned, but had to formally hold our executive session. Our first item of business is a proclamation. Ms. Moffett?
Whereas, in the view of Woods Hole Historical Museum's role in preserving and teaching the community about the history of the coastal village of Woods Hole and encouraging the education and participation of the public at large with exhibits, walking tours, talks, traditional craft workshops, and teaching traditional boat-building skills. Whereas, the museum is hosting the 10th Biennial Woods Hole Model Boat Show and encouraging hundreds of visitors and exhibitors to come to our town during the early spring season. Now therefore, we, Mary Pat Flynn, Doug Jones, Rebecca Moffett, Susan Moran, and Samuel Patterson, as selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby proclaim April 18th and April 19th, 2015, as Woods Hole Model Boat Show Weekend. A witness thereof, we have hereunder set our hands and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed this day, Monday, April 6th, 2015, the Falmouth Board of Selectmen.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous? And good luck for the boat show weekend. Next item of business, any announcements? All right, we'll now have our time for public comment. This is to invite someone, anyone from the public who'd like to speak. Please limit your talking to under two minutes and to only items that are not our agenda this evening. Any?
Hi, good evening. I'm Anne Connolly. I'm the Executive Director for the Falmouth Housing Trust, and I'm just here tonight to invite the Falmouth community to participate in our lottery. We have three homes that are being built off of St. Mark's Road. Sam came to our information session. The deadline is May 5th. Hard copy applications are available here at Town Hall, at the Falmouth Public Library, in my office, which is at 200 Main Street, and then also online at our website, which is www.falmouthhousingtrust.org. It's right on the homepage, you can't miss it. And then also you can have an application mailed to you if you want to call HAC directly in there in Hyannis. They're handling the marketing and the lottery for us. The deadline is Tuesday, May 5th at 5:00. The prices of the homes are $185. This is a home ownership project. There are two capes, one ranch for sale, three-bedroom, two-bath. They're Tier One Energy Star, and it's important to note that the Housing Trust made a series of upgrades to the project to get to that Energy Star Tier One rating, which is fairly prestigious and difficult to do. They're nice, tight little homes, Anderson windows, a third of an acre, and that's lovely serenade.
Sorry.
And I think, I think that's everything, unless I've forgotten something. The number at HAC, if you want to get an application mailed to you, is 508-774-5400. And the woman to speak with there is Gail or Karen. Or you can call me, Anne Connolly.
Thank you.
Okay, oh.
Can I ask for some clarification?
Sure.
Because the acronym HAC actually could be applied to two different organizations.
The Housing Assistance Corps. Okay. What, Becky, did you?
What was the date?
May 5th.
And where?
It's a Tuesday. So, so what we're going to do is we're going to have all the applications, and they need to be complete applications, and it is not a wimpy application. That's a technical term. It's actually pretty thorough. Really neat, if you're serious, you need to get on it, look at the application, gather your tax documents, your pay stubs, you need to have a pre-qualification letter from a local lender. So you really should get on it if you're interested, and so that's why I'm here encouraging everybody on FCTV. It's May 5th is the deadline to enter the lottery, and then depending on how many applications we have, we'll schedule the lottery. Sometimes it takes quite a bit of time to go through all the applications because they do have to be complete. If they're not complete, they cannot be in the lottery.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So the date, the date for that?
The deadline is May 5th.
Okay.
At 5:00. But, you know, if you get an application and you have questions, I'd encourage you to call us sooner rather than later, and we can go through and help, help you if we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and I should say one last thing. Sorry, Doug. This is a municipally-supported project. We partnered with the Town of Falmouth and the Falmouth Housing Trust to create these three homes, so thank you to you too. Okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah, my name is Stephen Seymour, and I wanted to let people know that I plan on filming some of the meeting tonight. My understanding of public meetings, you're supposed to let people know, so I wanted to do that. Then I had one question, when the Eversource discussion comes up later, will there be an opportunity for the public to weigh in on that?
Yes, there will.
Okay, thank you.
If you could let us know when you start filming or what part of it you're filming, just so people know, I would appreciate that.
Give me that part.
Just that part, okay, thank you. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Ahmed Mustafa, Precinct 4, and I'd just like to invite all veterans of the town to Palmer Avenue Saturday from 9:30 until 11:00. It's a little coffee clutch that Joe Quintilliani has put together, so if anybody's a veteran in town would like to stop by, we're trying to get a little group together and change ideas and ask questions and help people out. Thank you.
Thank you.
I said Palmer Avenue, it's Elks.
Oh, I'm sorry. It said the Elks on Palmer Avenue.
Thank you very much. Any of them else would like to make an announcement or comment? All right, thank you very much. Next item of business is dealing with the minutes. First are the March 30th public session. I had two corrections I'll start out with. First on page two, the public comment, just to make sure that Ahmed Mustafa's name was included on the flag code, and then on page five, okay, actually, I guess it's the precinct's eight and nine meeting are listed being on April 1st, and they will actually be on April 8th. Any other edits or changes?
You caught mine. I move approval has edited.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous? The next were the March 30th executive session minutes, and I think there were some corrections that were going to be sent into the office, and so we'll get another draft of that to look at and approve those at a later date. Thank you. Next item of business and the summary of actions are licenses. The first is to approve an application for a new Class II motor vehicle license at Intergas 10 North Main Street. Do I have anyone here for the applicant? Could you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Tony Elteip. I am a cousin of the owner of Intergas, Joe Sade, and we're applying for a license.
Okay, and the understanding is this is to, what is the number of cars you expect to be selling through this?
We're trying to do between two and three cars, that's it.
Any question for the board? Rebecca?
From the Building Commissioner, when we have his agreement, it says the gas station is under special permit and sale of vehicles would require a modification of said permit. So I don't know whether that is something we need to have the modification of the said permit.
I believe we do need to get that from the zoning board of appeals to say that before we can approve it.
That actually was my question as well.
So we cannot approve this until we've received from the zoning board of appeals that a special permit has been put out to allow for sale of vehicles under, because the gas station's currently running under its own special permit, and to modify the special permit to allow sale of vehicles has to happen before we can approve it.
Okay. This is the zoning board of appeals. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Next item is to approve a request for a special one-day liquor license from the Fresh Pond Holy Ghost Society at 408 Carriage Shop Road on April 24th, June 20th, and June 21st, 2015.
I move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous? Next item is an approval request for a special one-day liquor license for the West Falmouth Public Library, 575 West Falmouth Highway, for April 11th, 2015.
I move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous? Next item of business is to approve a request for a special one-day liquor license for the Compassionate Care ALS for Cinco de Mayo on Academy Lane on Tuesday, May 5th.
I move approval.
Any discussion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Unanimous. Administrative orders. We have Mr. Martinson here, this is a request to allow for the extension of the scallop season. Would you like to give us a brief update about what this is for?
Thank you so much for having me this evening. Chuck Martinson, the Shellfish Constable, as well as the Deputy Director of Marine and Environmental Services, come to you before you this evening requesting that the town keep open the scallop season through April 30th. This request was brought to be by Mr. Webster, who's a recreational digger in the Town of Falmouth. He's actually here with us this evening, and he requested that it be open later, indicating to us that there were a number of scallops that were not captured this winter that otherwise would die. We consulted the Division of Marine Fisheries, who agreed with this request of Mr. Webster, so we're promoting this, moving this forward. Mr. Webster's indicated the water temperature has risen to 37 degrees, and he's prepared to go out and get scallops, so if he's willing to do it, I'm going to have to support it myself, so I would ask for your support as well.
Any questions from the board? I guess, just to clarify what's happened, is that these are some of the scallops that we did transplant and are doing very well?
They're actually, this is a natural set of scallops that we have. I wish we could take a bow for these ones, but these are naturally occurring. We had a mild summer last summer. They're doing well. There was a significant amount of ice, as we all know, this winter, so they couldn't be captured by fishermen who would normally fish through the winter, and the season ended pretty quickly last year with the ice.
So the major reason for the extension is that the scallops are alive because they couldn't be caught, and now we'd like to catch them?
Correct. Yeah, they only live for approximately two years, so if we do not capture them now, they'll die this summer and would just be wasted.
Okay.
This is open to the public?
Correct.
And it was for 15 days?
It's an additional, it would run, normally the season ends at the, at the last day of March, it would run through the end of April, so it would be an additional 30 days. At this point, an additional 21 days.
So the actual reproductive process is already taken care of?
Correct, yeah.
Has already occurred, I'm sorry. And so these are adults that are already not going to be reproducing them, is what you're saying?
Yeah, they're not prepubescent, they've already spawned, and they're, they've already done their work to probably get more.
Great.
Move for approval?
Second.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it.
And thank you.
Thank you.
In our handout, we also have about the youth shellfish day? Is that something? No, that's not in our handout. I have that in the packet. Is that something we can also do at this point, or do we need to wait?
I think we'll need to wait on that, since, yeah, we don't have it listed on the agenda.
And the hope is to have a Kids' Shellfish Day on July 22nd, 2015, at Bourne's Pond. We can't approve that tonight, but just to get the word out there to begin with, and then we'll approve that hopefully at the next meeting, but they can start getting themselves ready. And it's for anyone during those hours, open to any family digger, so head on out there after we approve it next meeting. Okay, the next item is to ask the Finance Committee to reconsider Special Town Meeting Article 21, to authorize the approval of $142,000 to make improvements to White Pine Lane. The Finance Committee had not approved this article because we had not made a recommendation on either the cost or the betterment, and we're hoping now that we have approved the 100% betterment for the residents, that the Finance Committee will reconsider it before town meeting. We have someone from the Finance Committee, are you here at all? No, you're here for the window, so.
Do you need a? Judy isn't already watching on television right now.
Great.
She's already in the room, maybe, I haven't looked around enough.
Any questions?
Do you need a motion?
Yep.
To do that? I move that we refer the Article 21 of this April town meeting back to the Finance Committee for reconsideration.
Second.
Any further discussion with the board? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None? Unanimous? And we'll, if you would pass that on, if she's not watching, that would be great. Nick Lowell.
Next item is, the Town Manager has asked the Board of Selectmen if we would like to consider having a policy on flying the flag at half-staff. The issue has arisen that this past few weeks, we had a longtime member of the community who did pass away, and I think previous practice for many years had been in that instance, the flag would be flown at half-staff. It was not done through the Board of Selectmen's office, it was not under the jurisdiction of the Town Manager. It was, I think, more through the Parks Department, and the Town Manager was looking for some direction as to how we feel about this and whether we want to have a policy, whether we'd like to have a discussion about this or not.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I think we should have a policy, and I would love to have found a public way of showing our respect for John Elliott. I am worried, though, about setting a precedent where we're going to have people requesting flags at half-mast for, for any number of different citizens for different reasons who have passed on, and I really would like us to take a good, close look at this and decide where we want to draw the line. Who should be receiving this kind of public request? You know, I think the guidelines are clear, that it's, you know, through the direction of the President or the Governor of the State, the President of the United States, and I think it's that way for exactly that reason. You just don't want to see flags brought down to half-staff, or somebody like me that might pass away in office. So I would just recommend that we look at it cautiously. I really respect, you know, the question being raised. I think it's a legitimate question, and we need to look at it and decide where we draw that line.
I think it's going to be very hard to draw the line, but I think it is a good question.
A similar thing that came up in the school committee is naming buildings. Who do you choose to give the name of a building to? You know, for what? For what basis did they earn that right to have that kind of notoriety, if you will? And, and, you know, we, we worked on that, and it wasn't something we just shot off. We thought about it for a couple of months, and came back with some recommendations after thinking about all the issues involved in it. So I look at it as sort of along those same lines. Maybe we want to ask some other people in other communities how they handle that kind of a matter, but, but I don't want to in any way degrade the respect that we owe John Elliott. I think it was a legitimate question. It's obviously been a custom we've practiced in this town before, and we justify it, we should be recognizing John Elliott, and I'm pretty sure that it's going to happen at town meeting as well.
In terms of a policy, there's already been a lot of research done by Veterans Council, and we can do, do more and use that as a, as a base of research for a policy, though towns do it, you know, it's been done in the past, and, and we can just formulate that going forward, so I absolutely think we should move forward with the policy.
Agreed. Ahmed Mustafa actually approached me today with a draft of a policy that I can hand out to you, which I'd love to put on the website, saying, "This is what we're considering. People can take a look at it, respond to it, we can all take a look at it, get some more input, and then have that as a future agenda item," if that's how you feel comfortable.
That's how I'd like to see it handled.
Rebecca?
I, I just think that if, if we're thinking about this, it's, it's a very delicate subject, and when you're talking about policy, it's not a delicate subject. And I think when you're trying to mix the two, it, it is very difficult, and it's, it's strong language. And when you come up with a negative, it seems as if you don't care. So how do you show you care, you show respect for individuals within your town who have given a lot to the town without using the American flag at half-staff? I say the recognition needs to be there, but I'm not saying exactly what that should be. The American flag throughout this country, and through wars and everything else, is our top respected item that we look at. And I think that saying that in a town, the minute you say, "Well, I think this person is more worthy than this person," is the hardest thing to do. And once you have guidelines or policies, and someone comes up with the reason that there's part of that policy, I think it's best left as it is, that once you've started, you can't stop and say, "No, that person only served a year and a half. No, this person served 10. No, this person put in 100 hours." It's a, it's a very difficult thing to do, but I think we have to have the meeting, I think we have to have some language, but I think it's a very difficult thing to happen in any town.
And that's why we need public input, and that's why we put it on the website.
I think, I think we could have a meeting on it, but I think it's very difficult.
Would you like to see a copy of the draft that was put forward, brought to me?
Well, I think we have our meeting, certainly, absolutely. I mean, you didn't want to do the policy meeting tonight.
I don't think we should have the discussion until we've gotten it out there to the public so that they can take a look at what we're considering, they can be prepared to respond to it. You can all be prepared to respond to it. This is something that just happened at 10:00 this morning.
Okay.
We do have copies of the document out right now for you to take a look at and take home if you'd like.
That's fine, that's fine.
Sure.
And I'll make a motion that we consider a policy for flying half-staff.
Second.
And I'll just read out to what the policy is being recommended, not for discussion tonight, just so people can hear what's being decided.
Why don't we just post it, though?
Okay.
It would seem that we would be endorsing this, I think if we go ahead and read it.
I think you're right. All right. I have a motion to put this on a future agenda item.
I made the motion, yep.
Yes. Can I second it?
Second? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It'll be posted very soon.
Right. We can get their website.
Certainly.
And we do encourage the public to take a look at the draft policy online and give us some feedback on that. The next item we have are some special events, and we'll first deal under the recurring that are recommended, and I will read them. If anyone wants to hold one, please let me know, but I will also read them so that we can do a little bit of advertisement for these events and people can be aware of what's going on. The first is the Woods Hole Model Boat Show, as we heard the proclamation, being hosted by the Woods Hole Historical Museum on April 17th to April 19th. Next item are the Daffodil Days, Spore Gardens, Fell's Road, April 18th and April 25th. On both of those items, I guess a quick question is, we did also receive a request concerning parking and road closures. Are those under different agenda items that we need to deal with those?
Yes, those are later on the agenda under business.
Certainly they are, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
With the exception of the Woods Hole Model Boat Show, there is a parking exemption during that, as there always has been. It's recommended.
Okay, and that's part of the recommendation under that? Okay.
Right. That's the only action I think that you'd be taking on that particular item.
Okay. Next item are the Annual Townwide Spring Cleanup, hosted by the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce on April 25th through March 2nd. Next item is the Cinco de Mayo Celebration on Academy Lane on May 5th, 2015. The Run for Your Life Road Race, Seacrest Beach Resort on May 9th, 2015. The Run Jack Run Family Run Walk at Falmouth High School, Trotting Park Fields on July 5th, 2015. The Falmouth Sprint Triathlon.
Hold.
Yeah, I'd like to hold that.
Okay.
As well?
I want to hold that.
The MDSC Buddy Walk by the Sea at Marina Park in Banshell on July 26th. The Falmouth Classic Car Club Car Show, both at Marina Park, on the dates of April 17th, June 14th, August 23rd, and being held at Gus Canty on July 26th. The Falmouth Rotary Club Craft Fair at Marina Park in Banshell, September 5th to September 6th. The Fifth Annual David Lewis 5K Run Walk, Gosnell Terre Haune Drive on September 5th, and some events from the Falmouth Village Association. The Easter Egg Scrabble, which actually was three days ago, but the request did come in on January 15th, so we can't hold them accountable for the fact that they did get their, certainly, application on time. July 4th Bike Parade on Main Street on July 4th. The Arts and Crafts Street Fair I'd like to hold, and the Movies in the Park and Peg Noon in Park Wednesdays from June 24th to August 26th, and Concerts in the Park, Peg Noon in Park Fridays, July 10th to August 28th, 2015. All right, none of those being held? Any motion to approve?
I move approval of all those applications not held.
So all except for number seven and number 12C?
Yes. Second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Unanimous? Those have been approved. Falmouth Sprint Triathlon, the Without Limits Productions. Any chance, do we have someone from that organization here to represent them? Well, we can discuss it, and hope we either approve it and continue it, or see if we get the information from each other.
I just wanted to make a comment about their application. I think it is probably the best application I have read from any organization wanting to use the Town of Falmouth for their activities. And because they have, if, if you would look in your packet, and if you would start it with "Without Limits Production, Falmouth Triathlon Race," the next pages outline exactly what they they do for the town of Falmouth. How many people they bring in, how much money they spend, and the age group breakdown and to show the percentages of the ages. They have relationships, occupation, income. Where are these people coming from? And they have the states in the United States and then what foreign countries they're coming from and what their athletic. And I think it is one of the best applications and I would like to recommend it for all organizations to see if they couldn't do just some part of this, because I think this is excellent. And when it came to the, how much money came into the town, I was very surprised. And they say, you know, "Oh, that was another thing that I noticed." On the page that shows the map, I think because they're from out of town, is, they call her Catherine Lee Bates, Kathy Lee Bates. And I thought that was quite interesting because maybe they didn't realize we always refer to her as her proper name. But it's pages and it's too bad there isn't someone here. This is probably one of the best applications and I would like for other organizations to follow the same thing that they do. That's my comments about them.
Any other comments? Sam?
I have a question because I did not see in here where Don Hofer had okayed this event. Now, maybe he has done that, but since it is on July 12th, a Sunday, and it's taking up part of the Surf Drive Beach area, right? That's the, but I just wanted to make sure that Don was aware of it and that he was comfortable that we could manage all of the swimming activities at that particular area.
He did, in his, he had a letter that sort of covered them all with a view that he was concerned about.
So I missed it. Great.
I see he's also listed as one of the references.
I saw him as a reference, but I didn't see the response. Okay, thank you.
And it is fairly early in the morning in which the event gets cleaned up and out of the way. I was impressed by the amount of work they put in to come up with a new parking plan to make sure they kept parking off of Main Street.
Agreed.
And certainly it was a lot of work to come up with that and I was impressed by that. Any for the discussion? Any public comment about the triathlon? All right. entertain a motion?
Motion, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Motion to approve the Falmouth Sprint Triathlon, Surf Drive Beach, July 12th, 2015.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Unanimous? The next item is the Arts and Crafts Street Fair on Main Street for July 18th. Last year at our meeting, I had asked whether it could be considered to have this moved to Catherine Lee Bates instead of Main Street. I would prefer that to, what happens right now is they close Main Street, Eric Nebrin parks illegally on Catherine Lee Bates. I'd rather put the vendors on Catherine Lee Bates by approval and let people park legally on Main Street. The safety of the, if you're going to close one road between Main Street and Catherine Lee Bates, I'd rather close Catherine Lee Bates and have the safety access on the Main Street. Do you know if this was considered when the Special Events Group looked into this?
It was not considered by the Special Events Group. It was not presented by the applicant nor was it considered by the group. It was discussed last year and the organizers were not willing to propose that.
Well, I wish we could go back to them and ask them to really seriously consider it as an option instead. I'm not sure whether, how the businesses would feel one way about it and I'm not sure that I'm as concerned. I think it'd be much better for the townspeople to be able to still use their Main Street. I think the businesses would still get their walk-by and be able to park and use them as opposed to, I think some businesses may not get any business because of the craft fair, but that's just my individual opinion. I'm not sure if anyone else has anything like.
Well, I agree with that.
Personally, I think we need to reach out to the, this is, to the Falmouth, let's see, it's the Business Association.
The Village Association.
Well, it's the Village Association, but the businesses really to get their input on what kind of an impact. Is it positive? Is it negative? And yes, and then maybe we need to insist a little bit more that they look at an alternative location. In my family, I would be outraged because the women all go there on that day. It's something they look forward to participating in. And I think they do shop at the businesses on Main Street while they're there at the craft shop. So I don't know the answer.
It certainly is contrary to the policy that we established about the activities happening on July and August on the main streets of our village. It is completely contrary to it and we've already asked other people to move off Main Street for that. And so I, that's the reason why I think it'd be consistent to ask this group also to move off of Main Street.
I think it could, I see that the police have made a statement. They don't see any problem as long as proper traffic and safety measures are taken. They've worked with them. I think, you know, maybe it could be communicated that it was raised at this meeting and the thought is that maybe next year it wouldn't be approved if that weren't presented. But I think at this point, it's kind of late to try to do an entire new plan. I also know that the Business Association for Main Street are a very smart and active association and this discussion, I think, will give them an opportunity to voice their concerns if they have any next year.
That's exactly what we did last year and that's the reason I'm a little frustrated that they.
And they're not here objecting, so I would move approval at this point.
Okay, Rebecca?
Additional information on their front sheet is they are requesting that Main Street is closed from 6:00 a.m. and is that to get everything cleared? So it's 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. so the crafters can get their displays out.
Is that the same as last year, Heather?
Yeah.
Same?
Yeah.
That's a setup time.
It's quite an operation, setup.
Just for the assistance of the working group, this event does not meet the board's policy and you'll see in the application on the item that says, "Does this meet the board's policy?" The answer is no. But it was approved last year at this location. If the board wants the working group to look at something else, I think we need a vote of the Board of Selectmen directing the working group to explore the alternative for next year. Otherwise, we just received the applications and that's what we have to reflect on. So I think the board, if you really want that to be earnestly looked at over a period of time to develop a real alternative, as you recall with the other event, it takes an awful lot of time and energy to do that and we need the direction of the board to effectively do it.
I'll amend my motion to make it subject to there being a direction to the Special Committee to explore that alternative for next year.
I'll second that, just a look.
So the motion to approve this year with the additional direction to the request that they can look into the possibility of it being moved next year.
Correct.
Rebecca, for the discussion?
So if we would continue with this, it says, "It is noted that this event no longer meets the minimum qualifications for special events adopted by the Board of Selectmen dated January 6, 2014, that this date falls during the month of July as an event on Main Street." So I don't know how that could be. I mean, the words are there. We took the vote. It was decided, well, let's see what the Selectmen think, but we voted that we would not have events on Main Street in the month of July.
Well, no, we voted that we would look at it very carefully, that special consideration would be given. Not that we would forbid them, but that it was only under special circumstances that we asked the Committee to very seriously consider what other options were available. And then they could still make a recommendation one way or the other, but to really look into ways of moving it.
Well, then how do you interpret that we voted on January 6th that we would not have any events on Main Street in the month of July? How else is that interpreted?
I guess I do not remember the vote saying that.
This is, this is from Ray Jack's Director of Public Works and his comments. So it is either that when there was the discussion with the special events and they still wanted to be on Main Street in July, that it would be overlooked and we would say, "All right, let's talk about it next year," when we've already talked about it in January. And so now it comes up and it's on Main Street in July.
And my thought about that is that Heather has answered that in suggesting that it being a directive by the Board of Selectmen. And so my motion has incorporated that as being a directive.
But we had a directive.
So next year, no, that it was not a directive, vote of the board. It will be next year or as soon as we take this vote.
Sam?
It is a very large event. It draws a lot of people in and I really would like to have the input from the Business Association because I think if they consider it to be a positive thing, you know, once a year, we can host this kind of thing. You know, we host a road race that shuts down a significant part of the town, right? Why not have an event like this if in fact it is so popular and so patronized? I'd like a little bit more input from the people who are going to be most impacted, which is the Main Street businesses. Another thing I might suggest is that when we do have this event or any kind of a Main Street shutdown, the C-line, C-C-R-T, C-line goes right down Main Street. They should be given a warning so that they can talk to their drivers and understand how they're going to reroute the buses, because it's kind of circuitous and a big bus is not an easy thing to maneuver around through narrow streets. So I would just remind people to, you know, consider giving them a heads up, you know, a week ahead of time so they can plan to make modifications.
Heather?
I can tell you that following, prior, just prior to last year's event, there were some significant changes in the layout and the way that the different stalls were placed on Main Street that addressed concerns of the public safety departments. And they're satisfied that everything has been done to make it as functional as possible given that the street's closed down for the day. So that's where we sort of drew the line was that they've done everything they can do to make it a functioning event, given that it is an event that closes down the street. I think the other thing to be mindful of it is, is it is an application of the Village Association. It is their event. They've hosted it for, I think, 32 years. So it comes straight from the Village Association as an event that they feel is desirous for the Village Association.
And I'm not saying get rid of it. I'm just requesting it moved to a street that is now being parked legally. Now, the other thing might be, you know, my leaning would say, "Well, if they're going to do that, I would like to have the parking rules actually enforced because I worry about Catherine Lee Bates when it gets parked on both sides of the road, as our only safety artery through the main street, main part of town." You know, I'm not sure how well the buses can get down that road when people are parked on both sides of that street. And that's the other reason for safety, I'd prefer it the other way. Maybe a compromise would be, we ask them this year, is there any possibility this year, but give them the option of saying, "No, actually, it's too late." And say, "Well, really look into the possibility for next year."
I think Heather already said it's too late to make those changes this year.
We haven't asked them.
So we're directed. Well, she, I thought she already made a comment on that.
No, I made a comment that last year's event, there were some significant changes made to address concerns of the public safety divisions. Those will be implemented again this year in terms of when they need to make announcements to vendor. I don't, I don't know that.
But this year, they were not, it was not broached about whether they would move at all?
No.
Mr. Chairman, could I clarify one other item? The January 6, 2014 date was, as I recall, when this board adopted your special events policy. Subsequent to that, last year, of course, you permitted the Arts and Crafts Festival on Main Street. And so this would be the second year since your policy was adopted that the Village Association's come forward and asked for your consideration in recognizing that your policy does not encourage that. So I just want to clarify that. That's what the January 6 vote was, adopting the special events policy. But last year, you did approve them being on Main Street with the kind of caution, Mr. Chairman, that you have already referred to. So I think that's one of the reasons that the group has come back again.
I guess what bothers me a little bit is the same group that didn't want to have the farmer's market on Main Street because of reasons that they had, but they want to have their thing on Main Street. And I think that there's a little bit of a double standard that does trouble me. I'm okay with voting it for this year again, but I really would like them to be aware that it is not meeting our requirements and to very seriously consider the option for next year, 2016, moving to Catherine Lee Bates and really looking into it and that their proposal next year needs to come up with reasons why that does not work before, I would hope, this board approved it, that they said, "We looked into it. We seriously thought about it. It won't work for these reasons because we checked it out." And then say, "I guess it's the only option." Rebecca?
Heather, was there a discussion that there would not be any activities the month of July? Was that discussed at special events meeting?
We always review the board's policy that indicates there will be special consideration made for events during the months of June, July, and August on the main streets of our villages. And careful consideration will be made as to the impact of those events. That was considered last year. The board, the working group indicated that it did not meet the standards of the Board of Selectmen's policy and the Board of Selectmen approved the event for last year on Main Street.
So I know we've already had a motion, second, and generally that, that's a discussion. I would like to find out, does anyone in the public that would like to comment on the possibility of, or on the Arts and Crafts Street Fair on Main Street? Okay.
Okay.
Are we ready to vote? So again, just to make sure we're aware of the motion, they approve it for this year with the direction to very strongly encourage them to consider moving to Catherine Lee Bates with evidence as to why can't if they come back to Main Street. Is that clear?
Absolutely.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Okay, the next item are some new events that are also recommended. And I would like to go through these. We only have four of them, item by item, in case somebody is here from these organizations who would like to tell us a little bit about what their activity is. The Events Group has recommended these, so I don't expect there's going to be any debate about them, but you still might want to do a little bit of a spiel as to what's going on. The first is the Team Brayden 5K Walk Run. It's organized by Kristen Black. And this is on Saturday, May 16th, 2015. And it's at Marina Park in Banshell. It is a 5K run and walk charity event. Any questions from the board? entertain a motion?
I move that we approve these two applications.
Is it just the Team Brayden 5K Walk?
He just did the first one.
I said, oh, you just did the first one. I'm sorry. I thought you covered the second one. Well, then, right. I move that we approve the application for the Team Brayden 5K Walk and Run.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is the Falmouth Chamber Corral Summer Song. This is also Marina Park in Banshell on July 7th, 2015. Do we have anyone from this organization? Any questions from the board?
I move approval of the Falmouth Chamber Corral Summer Song event.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Unanimous? Last two are two beach wedding ceremonies. One is at McGansett Beach on September 19th, 2015, and one is Surf Drive Beach on June 5th, 2015. Any questions on the two wedding applications? If you'd like to approve those together.
Okay.
I move approval of the two wedding applications as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Unanimous? All right, our next item on the agenda are some committee interviews. The first we have is for the Substance Abuse Commission. And we have six vacancies with terms ending June 30, 2015, June 30, 2016, and June 30, 2017. And we have one applicant tonight, Nancy Schroeder. Nancy, if you would come to the podium, briefly introduce yourself and tell us why you'd like to be involved in Substance Abuse Commission.
Sure. My name is Nancy Schroeder. I am very interested in contributing to the town of Falmouth in some respect. And I am also very concerned about the substance abuse situation in Cape Cod and in Falmouth. I have had friends who've had, lost children to this disease, to the disease, and so that's probably my biggest reason. The other is I am a retired high school teacher from Mashpee, and I've been involved with a lot of young people most of my life, and some have gone in that direction, some haven't. And I just feel I can make a contribution because I'm familiar with, you know, with the type of students that do get involved in substance abuse. Also, like I said, I am retired from teaching, and it's my first time that I can get involved in the town. I've always wanted to do something for the town. So now that I'm retired, I feel I have a little more opportunity to have some free time to get involved in a committee. A friend of mine, Sharon, who's here, she had asked me to, if I would be interested. I am in, been involved in recovery for twenty-seven years personally, and I've also recently got a national certification to be a recovery coach. So I've been involved in the area for a lot, lot of years, all in Falmouth, and I feel that that's sort of my qualification for being on this committee.
Any questions from the board?
Yes.
Rebecca?
I think you have a good mentor in Sharon.
Thank you.
And I think that as far as her background, which I know personally and do not know yours, but do you have an eye of just anything off the top of your head when all of us are talking about, what can we do about our young people that are involved with drugs? Just where, where does that fly in your head?
Well, for me, a lot of it starts with parents, particularly, you know, with the young children and the parents, and getting involved somehow with them in the schools. I mean, I, I come from the school situation, so I can see, you know, the young children in the schools. I think the older kids, it's too late, you know, they've already formed, but it's a cultural thing to me. It's not just, you know, one or two kids. It's a, it's a cultural thing. And I think, you know, it's a really hard, hard disease to attack because it's just so big. And, but I think the schools, getting kids at a younger age, I know they used to have those programs, DARE programs and things like that, and I think more of those kind of programs where the kids would be able to see. But I think the parents have to get involved too somehow, you know, whether it may be mandatory for a parent to be involved in some kind of program before the child gets into the first grade, something like that. There's a mandatory parents' night where parents can hear about substance abuse. But at a young age, I think is where we need to approach that.
I just thought if you had some thought there, that I think Falmouth is a very fertile ground for listening to new ideas.
Right. Well, I think the other thing is, we do, because of all the substance, well, the, you know, for Gosnold and some of the programs we have here, we have so many programs in Falmouth, and a lot of the people, when they come through those programs, they ended up staying in Falmouth. And sometimes that's good, because then they, they show in the community that the good it does. Sometimes it's not so good, because if they go back out again. But I find that most people who, who I've known that, you know, really develop through the recovery program, they really want to contribute to, to Falmouth, or contribute to where they, where they are. And I think when you see people like that, it helps turn around the others, you know, they can speak out in the community too, you know, so.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Sam, you're going to?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for stepping forward, because it is a critical public health problem in this community and across the Cape. And, and, you know, we need to try to make these individuals productive human beings and contributors to the community. So I applaud you, and it does sound like you have an excellent background working with youth. If I could answer Rebecca's question, from my own experience, when I was a young father working in an engineering group at Westinghouse in Maples, Maryland, I was sitting with two other engineers, and they were talking about their sons, who were older and had gotten into drugs. My son was like two. And so I just turned to them, I said, what can you tell me that would help me, as my son is growing up, to avoid what your sons have had to go through? And they basically, both of them said, you know, when we were in home study sessions with social workers, we were told that we made the mistake of letting our children run free too early, that we needed to stay involved in their adolescent years, not looking over their shoulders, not the helicopter parents, but at least being in the organizations that they're part of, it be scouting, or church groups, or four-age, or Boys and Girls Club. But staying involved with your youth as they're maturing through those adolescent years is extremely important to keep them on the right track and help them not be swayed by peer pressure, which seems to be a common way that they get involved in these illegal drugs.
I do, again, think, you know, the parental thing is so important, because a lot of the parents themselves have problems that don't get addressed, and all that gets passed down generation to generation. So there's some kind of way, because, because as a teacher, I think most of you know, like on parent school night, only the good kids' parents come. You know, the kids who, who even want to talk to the parents, they don't show up. And sometimes those are the substance abuse kids too, you know, that those are the parents who aren't that interested, those are the parents who don't show up, those are the parents who go by the wayside, and then their kids do that too. So if there was some way we could get the parents sort of in, I don't know, I always think it may be a mandatory thing where they had to come one time to hear or listen to something about how to raise a child. You know, I don't think a lot of parents come with directions, you know. Children are born, they don't come with directions, so, you know, a lot of parents just fly by the seat of the pants, really, as far as raising a child. So anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? It's a pleasure, the board.
I move approval of Nancy Schroeder to the Substance Abuse Commission.
Term ending June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Congratulations.
And thank you.
And thank you for joining that committee. I'm sure they'll look forward to having you there. Next are, we have two constable positions available with unexpired terms until June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. And we have one applicant tonight, Kevin Casey.
Good evening, I'm Kevin Casey, present three, an applicant for the constable position.
Can you tell us why you'd like to be constable?
Well, as you see in my application, rather, I put down for something to do. I'm retired, I'm a volunteer up at the Falmouth Hospital at the VRI, I'm a volunteer out at Otis at the Military Retired Activities Office, and I figured I could pursue this endeavor and be of service to the town, both the town and the legal system in the town.
See, you brought yourself your references with you tonight also to support your application. Quite a, a good group of references for us to be able to check on, and officially also that we have heard from the police department that they have no reason why you're not being an appropriate constable. Any questions from the board? Thrilled to have you apply, and entertained a motion.
I move to appoint Mr. Casey to constable with an unexpired term until June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? None? The unfortunate news about that term is it ends June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, which we hope you will then reapply at that point, but it's a much shorter process at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations. Next item is our presentation on the Lawrence School windows. Mr. Lowell?
Should be right there. Take the one towards me.
Rebecca, would you get the lights a little bit, please? And if you would just introduce yourselves so we know which organizations you're representing.
That's fine. Hello, my name is Nick Lowell, I'm the vice chairman of the Finance Committee.
I'm Pat Murphy, I'm the director of finance and facilities for the school department.
Thank you. Thank you for having this presentation tonight. I've been involved with this project because on the Finance Committee, I'm on the Energy Subcommittee, and have looked into a lot of energy projects. This was originally considered as an energy project, doesn't fit that as well, but I've just been sticking with it. And so I wanted to get this presented to you tonight in advance of town meeting, in part simply to raise awareness about this particular project, because it's been a little bit of a sleeper project, but also to just make sure that you guys knew exactly what was going on, to let you know that the Finance Committee has endorsed this project with a unanimous vote in support. So Lawrence School, originally built in nineteen fifty-one to fifty-three, and the windows, which are the primary focus of what this article for town meeting is going to deal with, is replacing the windows that were built and that were installed, that actually were replacement windows in nineteen eighty-five. Many of these windows are in very bad condition. But to be clear, there are a bunch of windows that were installed when the addition at Lawrence School went in in nineteen ninety-seven. Those windows, we're not talking about replacing those, those ones are still in perfectly good condition. And there are some windows that date back to nineteen fifty-three. Specifically for this project, this overhead view of the Lawrence School is trying to show you what areas are going to be replaced. The areas in red here show areas where there are significant numbers of windows that will be replaced. We're also talking about, that we call as the window project, but it's more than just windows. It also involves the skylights. There are six major skylights over the cafeteria and workshops, and two over the gymnasium. And then there are also five entrances on the front of the building that are all, the doors will end up being replaced. So it's really windows, doors, and skylights. Now, the reason that these windows need to be replaced, number one, that overall, that this project needs to happen, is number one, is that there's a significant safety issue with the hanging windows. So if you note in this picture, there's a wooden block propping that window open. In the warmer months, this photo was taken just a few weeks ago, and there's still snow on the ground, but normally in the warmer months, there's no air conditioning in this building. So in order to keep it cool in the summer, especially if you're on the sunny side of the building, you want to pop the windows open. But the balancers in those windows have, many of them have failed. Some of the windows have failed so catastrophically, they're actually screwed shut. But in other cases, the windows can open, sometimes only one balancer is working, and the windows are prone to falling down very suddenly, very heavy, on a very sharp corner. It's a very likely, it's just very dangerous as far as fingers, hands, arms, getting caught in that window. So right now, the policy is that only custodians are allowed to open and close those windows for, because of the risk. Existing, other reasons that, that these windows need replaced, and the doors, when we get to them in a second, is there's a certain amount of rust around the frames, there was aluminum flashing that was put over, aluminum trim that was put over some of the wooden sills, there's a certain amount of rot that's occurring underneath those. When the windows were put in nineteen eighty-five, in some cases, they were kind of customized a bit around some of the existing doors. There were some issues with the framing there of rust and whatnot. So even the doors in the back of the building, the smaller doors, for classroom doors, would end up getting replaced also. The most probably obvious thing that almost anybody would see when they go to Lawrence School, particularly if you go around to the backside, is that there is a film, these are, these are thermal pane windows with two layers of glass. Inside, between the glass, there's a thin layer of plastic, that's the energy efficient material that helps keep out certain rays, and keep in certain rays, whatnot. In many cases, that plastic has split, it's discolored, brown, it's peeling, and so you can see it in, again, on the south side, they've done some maintenance on the north side, where they've been able to actually clean some of these up. But it's cost prohibitive to do all of them. On the south side, you see a lot more of them. In that top view, though, you can really see how the, it's split. It looks terrible, but also is not helping with the energy efficiency of the building, of the windows. The gymnasium, it had, there's windows that are up high in the gymnasium that have been covered over and plywooded over and painted. Those were deemed to be a glare hazard, but they really add a lot of natural, would add a lot, not a lot of natural light into the gymnasium. Those will be replaced and put in with translucent glass, so that doesn't have the, doesn't create the stark shadows, but adds natural light. And then the octagonal windows, many of those are broken, rotted, and just completely falling apart and need to be replaced. Again, those date back to fifty-one, to fifty-three. And then the skylights, I mentioned the skylights over the cafeteria and the gymnasium, those are single pane skylights, many of them leak, they're desperate need of replacement. Then the doors. So all the double doors in the front of the building do not meet existing code for width. There's a center post that runs down the middle of those, so when they open them up, they don't meet the existing fire code. So all those would end up getting replaced, one way or the other, to increase the width of that opening. So it's a lot, it's a lot of work. There's over four hundred windows and doors in this project. When you add them all up, the construction cost, three point four million dollars. The lion's share of that, two million dollars, is the openings, they're called the windows and the doors. Part of the reason that cost is so high is that the Lawrence School is within one mile of water, so that means that all the glass needs to be the debris resistant glass, the hurricane proof glass, so that substantially increases the cost over what you originally hoped for. So that's three point four million for the construction cost. When you add in the other, the other costs, project manager, architectural services, you're up to three point nine four seven million dollars. Now, the good news is that this project falls under the Mass School Building Authority criteria. So Mass School Building Authority for the town of Falmouth will reimburse it up to thirty-seven point nine five percent of our expenses for qualified projects. They have pre, they have approved this project, so we're on the Mass School Building Authority path for that. Realistically, they never approve exactly up to the full amount. Our project engineer has estimated thirty-five percent reimbursement as being a realistic number. So if we put in that thirty-five percent reimbursement, the cost of the town would be a little over two and a half million dollars. Assuming that the project gets bonded out at fifteen years, which was what Jennifer Petit, our director of finance, had estimated, she would do, the first payment would be about two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars for the town. That's a two point four seven cents per thousand on the tax rate. So a four hundred thousand dollar home would be about nine dollars and eighty-eight cents in the first year for the project, declining over the next fourteen years. So it's a, it's a substantial amount of money, but it's also something that we really need to do. Okay, so in summary, we've got four hundred windows and doors, or so, depends exactly how you count. Most of them date back to nineteen eighty-five, some of them from the early fifties. This is going to be regulated, the work would be done to support both maintenance and safety reasons, and energy efficiency. So town meeting would vote, will be voting first next week, the special town meeting, three point nine million dollars. It would be a form of debt exclusion, this is a Proposition Two and a Half override, with the expectation we're getting a thirty-five percent, thereabouts, reimbursement for the Mass School Building Authority. And it is called a reimbursement because the way that the process works, you pay the contractor, and then, then you submit the bill to the Mass School Building Authority, and they reimburse the town. So we pay first, they reimburse second. It does require a two-thirds vote at town meeting, I believe it requires a two-thirds vote from your board to put it on the ballot, and then it would go, assuming it passes both of those, it would go to the ballot on May nineteenth, requiring a majority vote. If all that goes forward, the plan would be to start the demolition work in June two thousand sixteen, with the bulk of the construction happening over the summer, closing out the project in the early fall, October-ish timeframe in two thousand sixteen. That's it. Any questions?
Thanks, Nick. Has anyone been able to do any estimate on the energy savings going forward, so that there'll be another plus in terms of what we're spending now for heating, for example?
We haven't done that, although, so recall that this project, some of you may know, this project was originally proposed on the energy savings ESCO project.
Right.
And there was a number that was picked up for that, I don't actually recall what it was. It's not a great return on investment from an energy perspective, because the costs of the windows are so high, that while you undoubtedly do save heating costs, it's not a good return, right? There are other things that you would do first if you want to do it simply for the purposes of saving energy.
Would it be enough to replace the seats in the auditorium?
I don't know about that.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, any other questions?
Any other questions?
Well, Nick, I think you know my opinion, that I was definitely the ESCO person. And to give you some background on what I know about the windows at the Lawrence School, probably five years ago, it was on the ESCO list. And all the windows would have been replaced, and I believe we probably talked around a hundred windows, but I don't know on the four hundred what happened there. Maybe it was just the ones that needed to be done. But it would have been a million dollars to do that. And I know you disagree with that, and I know we had to pass over, and, and I also know that the Lawrence School's been waiting for a long time to have these windows done. And to see that it's even a year longer, I was thinking that if it was, were April, that it could get started in October, and it would be finished before winter. So it's, it's the same, that when you're between the rock and the hard place, it has to be done. This is the same organization that built our high school, so we do know them. And when I think about the process we went through with the high school, and I think how desperately we need those windows at the Lawrence School. how desperately we need those windows at the Lawrence School, whatever the project is, I will agree with it. But there's, there's been a lot of muddy water there that has, um, really, I just felt that ESCO, it would have been a cleaner kind of way to go.
Yeah, so let me just try to clarify a couple things.
Okay.
This is not the same project that was on the ESCO list.
No, it isn't.
Because it's, it's, it is a bigger project. There were about three hundred and fifty windows on the ESCO project. It did not include any of the doors, didn't include the skylights, and it didn't include hurricane resistant, uh, windows, which it would have had to, had it gone forward. So when that original project was proposed, different project, but when that project was proposed, I talked with Don Drew about how the estimate came up. There's a number that's been floating out there, one point two million dollars. How did that number come up? He says, "I was on the walkthrough with an architect on that project." They walked around, and architect said, "Yeah, probably about one point two million dollars to replace all these windows." That was six years ago. It was not a proper number. So this, the number here includes disposal costs, it includes oversight from project managers, and includes replacing, you know, again, more of the, the, more with better material. It's just not the same project. So that number was not a real number, and that's the, that's the, uh, the problem. I, I can't, um, I can't stress more that these are not the same projects, and they're not, and that was not a real number. So we had the, the, our project engineer, uh, whose name is Sean Burke, he'll be there at town meeting. He did a comparison, trying to, as best we could, using the information that we had from the ESCO project, comparing this, to try to line things up apples for apples. And when we actually, when he actually did that and said, "All right, same number of windows, not the same type of windows, not including demolition costs, not including hazardous materials, not including project management," they actually came out to be very similar in the prices. I believe the difference was about ten thousand dollars difference, where the, this project was a little bit less expensive. But again, we didn't have, we don't have all, didn't have all the information there, so it's still hard to say, but it, really, if you try to really boil it down to apples and apples, it looks like they're very similar in terms of cost. But that was not a real number, so you have to, this is, this is a real number.
Thank you.
And it's the whole job.
It's the whole job, yeah, it's the whole job, so.
Anyone from the audience have a question? I know you'll be able to ask them at town meeting also, but time to get more information out there. Mr. Finnery?
Mark Finnery, precinct six. Um, to answer your question on the payback, I remember speaking with the finance committee last year, and you said something that was like a hundred and ten year payback, but that's still, it worked out to like thirty thousand a year or something in heat savings, so it's, even though it's a long time, it was substantial, I think.
Thank you.
Mr. Hanley?
I'll say, it was a very substantial payback. On the top of my head, I wanted to say it was more like three hundred years, but I have to go back and look. And it, that, again, there's, there is a nice, more importantly, it probably, there is an energy savings benefit to it, but more importantly, it'll, it should improve a little bit of comfort in the rooms, right? If you happen to be one of the students that's sitting next to those windows, especially one of the ones that, uh, has broken seam or whatnot, you'll, you'll be, it'll be good to see.
Very good.
Mr. Hanley?
Matt Hanley, Thomas Landers Road. I went to school here, I think everyone that lives in Falmouth went to school, the, at the Lawrence School. I come from a construction background, and I have to say, the Lawrence School was built in an age when they took pride in, in their construction. This building is probably one of the best buildings in the town of Falmouth. Yes, it has its shortcomings, um, because of its age. It was designed differently back then, but going to school in Falmouth, I went to the Morse Pond School, the Lawrence School, I went to the high school. High school was built in the seventies, terrible construction. I thought it was a mistake to, to renovate that building, it should have been torn down, it would have saved ourselves a ton of money. I thoroughly agree with, you know, adding energy efficient windows to, uh, this building to, to keep this building up and running. This building has paid for itself over the years, and I don't think anyone that's gone to school in that building could say it was terrible. Maybe the students that have went through it recently because of, you know, the browning windows and, you know, not being able to open the windows. This building was designed to have open windows. Hope of the new windows, you know, also have, uh, safety features, so you can, the teachers can open the windows, a swing out window. I would like to make sure that if we're purchasing windows for this amount of money, that we get some kind of guarantee from the contractor saying, "These windows are going to perform for this amount of time, and if there is any, any, um, you know, shortcomings, any leaks, any kinds of, um, delamination of the, of the membrane, discoloration, that, you know, this is going to be, you know, warranted under your company." Uh, also looking at the, the length of this project is probably, I would say, because I've worked in construction, I was an ironworker, I was also a glazer, I did windows up in Boston in twelve story buildings, I worked on the big dig, I've worked on, you know, pharmaceutical buildings, so I have extensive background. This project isn't a big project, um, it's probably going to take the summertime, and just the superintendent's pay is a hundred and ten thousand dollars for six months worth of work. So obviously, these numbers, there can be some shavings on it. So there's, these numbers might be a little high, um, there's always change orders and stuff like that, so, um, the Falmouth High School ran over a lot. It almost went to double their allotted price. I'd also like to see some kind of guarantees and performance requirements put in place before we dish out, you know, close to three million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just, um, I'll say, one thing, at this point, that there will be a tour available on Tuesday night before town meeting. We haven't quite nailed down the details, we'll have an announcement about it on, uh, Monday night at town meeting, but the intent would be at six, yeah, six thirty, six, yeah. We will have a tour, it'll meet in one of the, probably one of the classrooms, so that maybe town meeting members, or really anybody from the public that is interested in going and getting a tour and seeing some of these windows. Tour will be led by Don Drew and his custodial staff, depending on how many people come, just to show some of the windows and show what some of the issues are and, and talk about the solutions.
I think the details you have in the bid, the chances of us having it overrun are very, very slight, because there's so much detail to put in.
Yeah, obviously, the, uh, the, the high school hangs like a bad nightmare in the back of everybody's heads, right? But this is a very, very different project. There are many fewer unknowns, so, you know, I'm not going to say nothing will go wrong, right? But, but it's just not, like, comparable to the size of projects.
And the contingency that's in the budget.
There's a substantial contingency in the budget on, on multiple levels. Uh, one of the things that we're going to be doing before the project actually goes, the design phase is completed, is we're going to remove a couple of the windows in parts of the building where we think we can get them out, and look carefully at the, uh, framework and the lintels, and make sure we really understand exactly what's under there. It's a step that, uh, came up in a meeting that we had a couple weeks ago, that we will follow through with. But, uh, it's really not, it's really not comparable to high school, so, and, um, hope to keep it that way.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Patrick?
Sure, I just want to make two points in terms of vetting this project, and, and, you know, the, the weight of the high school project is sort of this history that's on everybody's shoulders. We brought the architect and the OPM in, and I, and I asked, uh, everyone's, uh, suggestions on who are the, uh, most helpful folks on school building committees in the past to come and vet this project. And we had about a dozen people come and vet this project, and put the OPM and the architect through their paces. It's a, it's not that exciting of a video, it's an hour long video that we have available to us, uh, and I was extremely pleased with the, with the quality of the folks who attended that meeting and had the, and made some of the comments and some of the suggestions on how to assure, uh, that this project is a successful project. And then the second, uh, comment I'd like to make is that, with, some of the biggest advocates for this project are the school custodians. And to the extent that, uh, Don Drew, who's the head custodian at, at Lawrence, volunteered to do a video walkthrough of this project, it's a little three, four minute video that we'll post, and he, in a very matter of fact way, he just goes around and tells, uh, tells you exactly what's going on with these windows and, and how dangerous these windows are. So we'll post that on the school website, and also, um, I'm sure that will get circulated. So there, there's plenty of ways to gain more information about this project, and, uh, I can tell you that we've done our best to vet this project, both by going through, using the professionals that the MSBA has assigned to us in terms of an OPM and an architect, and also going above and beyond and asking people, uh, from the community who, uh, are well respected in the trades and, in the, um, uh, building projects, uh, to vet this project also. So, uh, we're doing our due diligence, and we would like, uh, and, and welcome any, any questions or, uh, or comments on this project, so that we can make sure that it's, it's a really, a well done project and a project that everyone will be proud of.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Uh, next on our agenda is a request for a sign variance from the St. Patrick Church at five eleven Main Street. This is a, coming from the design review committee. Do we have anyone representing St. Patrick Church here? So just to make sure you're aware of what's been requested, or do we have a, that they want to install two additional signs? And the design review committee denied their application, but they did vote to allow one sign under section one eighty-four dash thirty-one C. Must be reduced to rectangle shape. Committee approved it, but I still think because it's a variance, or if we want to do something different than what the design review committee is, what our option is. Sam?
I, I thought the comments and, uh, recommendations of the design review committee should stand. I think they were well thought out, and, uh, I think we need to ask, uh, St. Patrick's Church to adhere to those and, uh, certainly respect the need for the signs, but I think they need to conform to the standards that Falmouth has set up, and we all know that signs can get out of hand, and that should apply to churches as well as businesses.
So, yes, you are representing St. Patrick?
Hi, yes, I'm attorney Cindy Amel, I know a lot of you know me. Yes, we're in a unique situation. The reason why we're looking for a variance is the design review committee actually feels that under the circumstances of having the fence where it's located, the sign attached to the fence might actually look better, uh, which is one of the reasons why we're here for the variance. Here's some pictures I've got. Unfortunately, I don't have everyone, uh, fence. What we could do and be very happy to do, is to do what the law would, um, ask us, and that is to put a freestanding sign in front of fence section, and we'll, and we'll do that. But it, to do that, looks, according to, um, Arthur, and also Nora and Linda, they thought it might look silly to have a freestanding sign with a four by four wrapped in front of the fence piece. Now, we can do that, and we can put bushes and hydrangeas and different climbing vines, but, um, it was actually brought up at the design review committee that it might look better if it was actually attached to the fence, uh, the entranceway. And then, of course, this is computer generated photos, and it, it won't look like that, it won't be fluorescent green shrubbery. There'll probably be, um, and this is something else that we wanted to offer. If, for instance, the garden committee or anyone else, or any concerned citizens or parishioners want to come up with ideas for the garden, great. He's already willing and hoping to put in several shrubs, that would be arbovitis, uh, the smaller miniature, um, and hydrangeas, and then, of course, some climbing vines and paxander to make it look very nice, but that's not in stone. Um, we first started this whole process back in February, and we received a letter, um, from the design review committee, but they were looking at a safety issue, they weren't looking at the sign being attached to fence. So this is the situation we're in. We just want to make the fence look prettier immediately, because, um, since the snow melted now, we can see that it's really, uh, kind of an eyesore, but once those flowers get in and a garden is placed around it, um, it's going to look much nicer. The reason for the fence in that location has a purpose, um, I don't know if, if that was already explained to you in some of the discussions before, but because there's so many activities in the evenings, community service activities, as well as our entire school, the school is not only run for the, for the children, but we also have a lot of adults in, um, preparation for the sacraments. So our cars going in and out of there, a constant clip, because we have quite a large community center down below, church in the cellar, um, constantly there were headlights going into the, the neighbors', which is the funeral home there, so that was the first reason for the fence. The second reason is, it's a great photo opportunity. We, we don't have, I mean, even though we have some wonderful sculptures and all, but when there's a confirmation class or a first communion, um, they are in front of the church, but it could look like any white building. What's kind of cute with the idea, uh, was to be able to have the sign on the fence and have the class in front of it. But the real purpose of the fence was to block the headlights, not only to the funeral home, but also to us too, because sometimes we have, um, events, whether we're standing or if there's, um, after a funeral and they're standing in that area, or a memorial, um, the headlights coming in and out also are very distracting to, to our activities in the evening too. We want to be beautiful, and we've received so many awards from, um, the garden group, gratification councils, et cetera, et cetera. We want to continue, of course, having a beautiful property on Main Street, um, and we want to put something there really quick to dress it up, because right now, we realize the fence is pretty stark where it is at the entrance. So I'm here just to try and make decisions tonight so that we can move on and, um, get this project finished.
Questions for the board, Sue?
Sure. In terms of the chronology, um, I see from the design review committee that they, since they denied, uh, the original request, the compromise suggested was to allow one sign reduced to a rectangular shape, placed between the church building and the parking lot, low to the ground, perpendicular to Main Street, which is what Mr. Patterson, I think, initially wanted to do. So this is, well, I'm not true with my question. And so it seems, I wanted to understand, so this is what was recommended by the design review committee? Do I understand that? Has the design review committee seen this?
Yes.
Okay, and they?
Yes, as, as of the last week of February, they actually thought that would look better. The reason is, this is, if you can see, this is redundant and, and silly, um, to have two identifying signs right next to each other, and they were, they didn't realize it was part of a project that was ongoing.
So do you have this recommendation, where they said that they recommend this?
Linda was going to be sending you a letter.
Has anyone seen that?
No, and the recommendation we have is dated March twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen, so I don't understand there's.
There's been three meetings. So here's, here's, here's what it is, if we can get away from, if we can just think about it and look practically at it.
I want to know the recommendation of the design review committee.
The design review committee on their last recommendation, when I met with them, thought that the sign would look better on the fence that is already erected.
And that's what we don't have, and you're saying they did that after March twenty-seventh?
Yes.
We don't have that in our information, I think that would be important.
That's why we're asking for a variance, because, by the way, it's not a safety issue. The, if you could, the bylaw that we're talking about is one eighty-four seven A, which says that a sign can't go on a fence. It's not about having, we're, we're well beyond this. We weren't looking for a second sign. We have a fence that we wanted to beautify, and putting the sign on the fence makes it prettier. If you notice, it's two different locations. This, um, this fence is the entrance across from, uh, the gas station, Polio Gas Station Y A. So if, if you wanted to, this is what it looks like. This is way over here in the driveway.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
And it's bad.
No, but I-
No, but I guess I would like to see the recommendation from the Design Review Committee so we have it in black and white.
I think it would be inappropriate for us to move forward without it.
Right. Same here.
So, I move to continue.
Now, I understand you're in a hurry, but we're not going to rush it beyond what the Design Review Committee has stated.
Right. The only thing is, if you could, perhaps between now and the next time we meet, because we'll resubmit the variance, if you could look into it a bit, because this was never really proposed as an idea. This is what they gave us based on a safety concern.
I think we understand exactly the issue. We just... And if the Design Review Committee is in favor of the signs, I don't think there'll be any issue. We just need to have that in writing from them that that's what their recommendation is.
All righty. Thank you very much. Could I have a copy of what you're referring to, that letter? I obviously do not have a copy.
You can probably get that from the town manager's office.
Then I have it this evening, too.
You can have my copy.
Would be really helpful for me.
And it's the... It's the second page.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I just requested it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have a motion to continue upon until we get receipt of the recommendation of the Design Review Committee. Is that correct?
Second.
Second for Mr. Patterson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next is a request for off-premises signed by the First Congregational Church on Main Street. This is for a Sandwich Board sign for their volunteer fair.
Hello.
Would you like to describe the sign and the issues in your request?
Hi, yes. My name is Trish Gessi. I'm with Cape Cod Volunteers, and the sign that we're requesting to place is actually on the premise of the church property. There's actually two signs, and it is, if you have in your materials, there's a copy of... It's actually Sandwich Board style, and the dimensions are 24 inches wide by 24 inches deep and 35 inches high. And on the side, it will have Volunteer Fair today, 11:30 to 2:00. And we're requesting to place two of those signs on the church premises, one in the front of the church and one on the back of the property, which is in the parking lot on the side of Catherine Lee Bates Road. And it is just for that one day at 9:00 a.m. until 2:30. Just promoting our fair.
This is an issue that does not go to the Design Review Committee, but just comes to us for straight variants? Just so you're aware.
Question?
Yep.
There was a... As part of the review, there was a question on whether this was church property that you would want to place the sign on.
We do... We would request you can place the signs on the church property at that address.
Okay, so it is church property?
It is.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion?
I move approval of the Volunteer Fair application for assigned variants for, let's see, I'm sorry, for the date of, is it April 18th?
The only thing to clarify is that on our agenda it says off-premise signs. It actually is an on-premise sign, but it's a Sandwich Board, temporary Sandwich Board sign.
Exactly. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Congratulations. Unanimous?
Thank you. Good luck with your done.
Yeah, thank you.
Next item, a request of some road closures. This is from on October 31st on Halloween from 12 noon to 2:00 p.m. for the Falmouth Village Association Trick-or-Treat Stroll Event, which in the past has been done on the sidewalks, and also on December 5th, 2015, from 4:00 to 7:00 for the Falmouth Village Association Holiday Stroll Event. Do we have anyone from the Village Association here tonight? Discussion among the board?
I guess I'm really questioning why we need to actually have a road closure for this kind of event. It seems to me that if you're walking in small, you know, two abreast down our sidewalks as a group, you know, one after another, why do we have to close a road down and interrupt traffic, bus traffic, all commercial traffic?
Should we discuss them as two separate issues? Because I do see them as doing very different instances. One, I think, is the elementary children walking...
No, it's actually on Saturday.
On Saturday, I'm sorry. No, it is...
When I first looked at it, I thought it was the same thing, but I think that event is done on the sidewalks.
Right.
So, they're asking for us to shut down Main Street.
And make it a pedestrian...
Way.
Right.
During these times. And I'm just struggling a little bit with the justification for that, given the nature of this event, and, you know, the need to not disrupt traffic flow.
And since we have plenty of time, maybe we could hold and ask some of the proponents to attend, because I see that the police department has voiced some concerns about requiring a parking ban, necessitating police resources for enforcement, sizable police detail to ensure effectiveness of the closures. It sounds like there's a lot more planning to be done, and we seem to have the time to do that. So, I would move to continue this and ask the proponents to maybe address some of the issues raised by the police department and to appear.
And first have a meeting with the police department before they come back to us?
Yes.
Rebecca?
I think if you're going to have the street closed, when is the Christmas parade? Because then the street is closed. And if this is on Saturday, the Christmas parade is usually the first Saturday of December...
Sunday.
First Sunday of December. So, this would be two days of closure is a... Would be more of mine... You wouldn't have two days. You wouldn't have a back-to-back. So, you've got a parade on December 6th, and then you want a closure on December 5th for a stroll. So, I wouldn't agree to that. And then, as far as the Halloween is concerned, I agree with what Sam has said. I think that just being on the sidewalks would be sufficient.
I do remember back when we had First Night, how wonderful it was when Main Street was closed off, and it was a wonderful walking place to be all walking down and not worry about traffic. It was a very nice event then, and... But these are... I agree with you on the day before the Christmas parade, and so do we need more... I mean, do we want to ask them for more information if we may not be inclined to agree to it, no matter what they tell us?
Well, I mean, the police department just needed their questions addressed, so I think it'd be helpful to give the proponent an opportunity to do that, but Heather has a...
I wanted to comment how it came to the board.
Okay.
The applications came in with all of the other applications of the Falmouth Village Association, and the applicant did attend the working group meeting and directed us to that request, being different from years prior, that in addition to the event, they were asking for the road closure. The working group did not take up the application because we thought that that request was more than just a special events application. It was a road closure and a special events application. So, he said, "Let's place this for the board for some policy discussion. Is that something the board's interested in closing those streets down?" We did ask for some public safety, but the public safety officers were there at that meeting there, aware that it's a possibility, and they would spend some time and invest in that, should there be an interest in the board to move forward with that discussion. But if it's something that you really don't think is necessary for the community, we want that guidance as well.
Doug, I just wanted to mention that I don't consider those First Night celebrations to be of the same type of event. There you had people moving back and forth between different venues to go to different performances, and you had, you know, it was happening in the evenings, you know, as part of New Year's Eve. This is, you know, a much more limited type of activity, of public activity, with a lot less participation. So, I don't put them quite... I quite agree with you. I thoroughly enjoy the First Night celebrations and lament the fact that we're not continuing to do that because it's a lot of fun. And my wife and I, should I admit it, actually went to the Sandwich First Night celebrations on this past New Year's Eve because it was an enjoyable thing, and we thoroughly enjoyed the performances that we visited. But I don't see these events as falling into the same large public activity that requires shutting down the streets, you know, for safety and ease of access reasons.
I guess my point is that I'm not sure I'd be adverse to the idea of clearing down a street for the right event.
Exactly. I agree.
I agree with that.
If the Village Association wants to come back and suggest we initiate First Night, we'll be open to that.
I agree.
But for these events, I'm not sure I'm going in that direction.
I am also very much in favor of off-season events that, where we don't have the conflicting issues with summer traffic and parking and all that. And I think this, it's a great thing for, you know, families and kids to look forward to having an event in, you know, the Halloween time, the end of October, and an event near Christmas. I think it's, you know, it's festive and, you know, way more upside than downside. The police did not take a position where they were not recommending it. They basically said they had some things to work out. But it sounds like, from what Heather was saying, that can, you know, that was considered to be doable.
Yeah, I just don't know how you have a parking ban. The police were saying to close the road without a parking ban seemed almost more dangerous. And then, to have a parking ban for a two-hour event, what time do you start that parking ban, and then when do you start towing? But I still think there's some more information that needs to be, before we necessarily have to make a decision.
I just want to be clear that, you know, these are events and activities that take a lot of staff time to plan for, and if the board is simply not interested in closing the roads for these uses, then we would not invest the staff time in that. If it's something that you'd like to see happen, then we'll, you know, gather the gang together and make sure they plan for that event, similar to the Arts and Crafts Festival. It's something that the board has previously adopted, and they'll... We'll do the best we can to make that event happen as safely as possible, given the circumstances, and we would apply the same effort to these if the board's so inclined.
Well, do we have a motion to authorize the road closures? No, we have no motion, so that is not going to be moving forward. Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, the Seizure License Renewals. We have two entertainment, a Sunday entertainment license, and I need to recuse myself from discussion.
Okay.
Ms. Walker?
Madam Chair, pardon me. I just want to disclose the fact that I have been participating in scouting activities with the Estes family for quite a few years, but we're not related in our family and not employed by the restaurant. I don't believe that that's going to influence my... Any decision that I might make.
This is for an entertainment license at the Landfall Restaurant on Woods Hole. It doesn't say a beginning and an end on the license. Let's see where it begins and ends.
Here it comes. Two separate licenses.
Okay.
One is Sunday and one is...
Okay. On the Sunday, entertainment is to conduct the live music. The place of entertainment is the dining room in the bar area on Sundays from 1:00 p.m. until midnight. The music will be recorded and live, all instruments, and the number of musicians is from one to six, and it's amplified. The building will be so insulated that all entertainment, musical or otherwise, will not be heard outside the building. This is valid from April 6th until November... April 6th of 2015 until November 30th of 2015.
And Madam Chair, one thing I think we skipped over. It's also 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday. So, it's separate hours for Sunday.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, there are two licenses, one for Sunday and one for the balance.
Yep.
Yeah. So, the one that I'm just saying to you right now is for Sunday. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I would like to open it up for discussion because we did receive a complaint from a neighbor that lives across the street, and it's dated September... Sorry. You know, September 30th, 2014. And then, we received another letter dated March 14th, 2014, which preceded it, from Jim and Don Estes. And it bothers me, I guess, that assurances were made earlier, but apparently the complaints persisted. And I would like to at least give the parties an opportunity to get up and give their perspective of what's going on and whether they have any reassurances that these complaints won't happen again.
Good evening. I'm Donald Estes, co-owner of the Landfall Restaurant. And I was told that Thomas Crane, who has been the person, the sole person to complain, would be here tonight to finally meet him and to hear what he has to say.
Maybe you could just give a little background on your... And your addressing of Mr. Crane's issues in the past? I see that you gave him your personal phone number, that type of thing.
True. Yeah, we opened our doors. We invited him for discussion. We've been to the town manager. We've been here last year, still have yet to see. He did call me one evening when we had some music. The next day, we called him. We had 30 semi-nights of music last year. We had one complaint. We have 50 beds, closed back, one complaint.
Can you tell me... Pardon me. Can you tell me about the insulation for the building?
Last winter, we placed all of our doors and windows facing the ocean. We keep them closed. Most of us who are managers have taken a crowd management course, which is required by the fire department. And one of those things that we've learned is that we are not to lock our doors. So, we do have customers who want to go outside and figure that they can go through those doors. Do they open? Sure. And we go along and shut them behind them. We've tried our hardest. I think we do a real good job. We've walked up close to his property and we've done music. One of the... I think one of the things that Falmouth should look at is a real noise bylaw. It seems to be an issue that has surfaced again, where a neighbor can say, "Oh, I heard the music." And then, the police can come by and say, "Well, it really wasn't all that loud." I propose that I could be on a subcommittee and start looking towards a sound bylaw that maybe other towns have adopted that are real and concrete. Somebody can come say, "I have a real complaint." Somebody can say, "I have a noise machine," and the noise machine doesn't go over those
How many years have the Estes family owned the Landfall?
This will be our 70th year.
70th year. In that period of time, do you usually hear complaints each season about the music?
No.
Is it just been recently that there seems either the amplifiers are turned up higher or the instruments are louder or...
No.
It isn't something that you think of from year to year. We need to insulate these windows. We need to change this room somehow. It's just that occasionally, there are people who are disturbed by music. Is that... Do I have that right?
I don't know. I've never met Mr. Crane to really hear what his complaint is.
And as far as you know, there's only one resident who has made a complaint about music coming from the Landfall.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Will you check the police reports?
Well, I think probably my underlying thing is that Falmouth is a town to entertain people, and people come to Falmouth for the entertainment and for everything else that we offer, and there's noise attached to it. It's when it is blatant and it's deliberate and it's early in the morning, or it's on Sunday morning, or it's still going at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, a.m. I mean, there's an abuse of it, but when you... I've been given a license that opens at a certain time and music is allowed, and you're closing the doors at midnight, part of your function is to entertain with music, and you've been doing it for years, and you're on the water. And I think it's... I... And I think it's, I think the point that I would say, it's what people expect. When they go to a restaurant, they like to have some type, I don't know if you have dancing or not, but, but people do expect some type of music. And I do think there's some kind of music, as maybe you come to a certain age, and maybe many younger people do have a different sound in their music, and maybe that's irritating. Maybe it isn't the kind of melody they want to hear. But I think it's what people expect. And so when I look at, I look at the restaurant, the number of years, you're saying there's this one complaint, and people can go in and have a lovely meal in a beautiful atmosphere and have some music. And I think that's part of what Falmouth is.
Great.
I'm going to make a motion to approve a license. Sorry.
With those, with the hours and the music.
That's stated.
You have a couple of hands up in the back.
Oh, excuse me, public comment. Excuse me.
Thomas Crane, we've actually met many times over the years. I'm sorry you don't remember me.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. This is a issue, I respectfully understand the comments you made, but this is also a small village, and it's about a resident who wants to be able to sleep at night. And just to digress, you know, briefly, you know, I'm sorry if many of my cousins who live on Juniper Point are more conflict avoidance than I have. They've talked to me, you know, regularly about it. I presented a record. I started, there are three letters on file going back to 2012. In 2012, I was very clear, this has been going on for several years. In 2012, they're actually cited for a noise bylaw. One of the problems I have in the complaints is a real difficulty in having the police respond. So in 2013, there was long communication with the police, how they failed to respond. I'll get to this past August in a few minutes. But I think as the March deliberations of the board, you know, revealed, the board very understandably wants to know when someone is on record with the police is violating this. There's a very real problem I've been having with the police. So one of my issues is, is a request to the board and to the town manager to encourage the police to take these kinds of issues seriously. I do want to turn to August 22nd and just, you know, that one example. So I called the police, I believe, this is according to my notes, which aren't the best, around 11:20. They said there was a urgent crisis, they couldn't deal with my complaint, but they tried to get to it. I finally called at 12:30, so that's an hour and 20 minutes later. The police were unable, an hour and 20 minutes later, to give me any time at all when they could get down to the Landfall. It was still going on at that hour. That's just, you know, one example in addition to the 2013 complete failure to respond to the complaint, even though the officer I talked to, I have his name here a second ago in November that year, heard my telephone complaint and said it was virtually identical to the formal complaint on which they were cited in 2012. And by the way, that reference is 12-203-430F. So let's turn to August 27. I understand that last year, you raised the concerns that I had with this applicant, and I very much appreciate it. Also, by the way, to digress, I've been to the Landfall all my life. I am sure my parents, before I was born, went to the Landfall from the very first days it opened. This is not about the Landfall as a restaurant. This is a separate license well, well beyond when they serve food, their kitchen, Mr. Estes can speak to it more properly, but their kitchen typically shuts down 9:30 maybe to 10:00. This is late-night entertainment when people are trying to sleep, and it's separate from when they are serving food. So having meal and, and your characterization, I understand that very well, but that's not what this application is about. The Estes did write me a very nice letter on May 14th. I don't know if, of last year, if that's in the record. But they promised several things. They promised a police officer. They promised a, a police duty officer at night. And they gave three phone numbers. The restaurant phone number, and Don Estes' phone number, and his brother Jim. And by the way, I have spoken to Jim. Apparently, Don didn't want to talk to Jim to know he and I have actually spoken. And they certainly know how to find me as well. But that night, number one, there was no duty officer. There were three phone numbers given. My notes are 11:18, I have cell phone records of all these. I called the restaurant, there was no answer. At 11:19, I called one of the cell phones, there was no answer. 11:37, I called the third phone number, there was no answer. So all of the assurances the Estes gave me completely failed that night. Now I want to talk about what, to me, is, is going on. This is, these are repeated violations, in my view. This is about doors opening and sound traveling on the water. I, I live just under a quarter mile. It's approximately 1,150 feet from them. It's well, well over any town limits. There's, this is an ambiguous question. Mr. Estes, I was really disappointed with his characterization that it really wasn't that loud in certain instances. When I hear it close to a quarter mile away, with my doors closed, my air conditioner on, this is not a marginal situation. We all know, yes, as you pointed out, sound travels over the water. They know when they open their patio doors, as Jim Estes admitted to me in the Saturday phone call, that that's what happened that night. They know they're violating the bylaw. It's really very simple. So to me, I believe this is a question of repeated and deliberate violations, and I think it's fair to ask that you hold this accountable, this applicant genuinely accountable. My request is that they take a timeout for a year and maybe think about the small village of Woods Hole. If your inclination is to proceed with this application, I'd like to come back and make some suggestions, or I suppose I can give them to you now, how to make this really work so the Estes, you know, really remember they're living in a village where people also want to sleep. And I think we have that right after certainly 11:00 a.m., 11:00 p.m.
I found your May 14 reference, and my, my question is, for example, there, there is a representation about hiring a police detail?
Correct.
Is that one of the things that you would like to see?
Absolutely. But, but more specifically, that, if, so this, this particular night, and by the way, there were, there were plenty, I shouldn't say plenty, there were other noise violations last summer. You know, I'm not the kind of person who wants to go complaining every night there's a problem. Sometimes, you know, ended at midnight or quieted down. As Don said, you know, maybe it was a situation of a door open, they found it, opened and closed it. So I'm not the kind of person, but I don't want you to believe we're talking about one instance of violation. But yes, ma'am, I think it's a fair condition that they agreed to having a police duty detail. I think it's a fair condition on the application if, for whatever reason, they cannot get a police detail that night, they don't have music that night. Because getting back to my problems with the police coming down, I certainly understand we're a busy town, police at night, that's when, when we're stretched. But if, when I call, the, the police know they're, one of their members of the force down there, it's handled in five minutes. It's very simple. So that would be, if you're inclined to proceed with the application, I would strongly urge that.
Seems a key point.
It, it is a key point. The other, the other key point, I was disappointed the application missed the key issue here, and that is, they open their doors. And when they open the doors, that's when we hear the sound. We don't hear the sound when the doors are closed. I appreciate they've insulated their property, but that doesn't address the problem. So if you're, another condition I would request is that they must have their doors closed. That's, again, very simple and easy, you know, to enforce. Doors are open, I hear the music, that's when they're operating outside their application. I think that's a very reasonable request. Also, very frankly, it's one night, they're asking to go to 1:00 a.m. a Sunday night. You know, we go to work Monday morning, and that's, to me, one of the worst nights to have this entertainment going to one. I personally would like to see both applications a time cutoff limited to 11:00. But to me, the last night to allow a 1:00 a.m. closure would be a Sunday night when you're going to work the next morning. Just very briefly, let me, if I could.
Could I interrupt just one second, Mr. Crane? How, how long have you lived near the Landfall Restaurant? How many years?
Well, the property's been this family since 1902. Next month, I'll be 65, so it'll be 65 years.
And you have been there each summer?
Absolutely, ma'am.
And the noise is worse last year? And you're anticipating?
No.
When?
No, ma'am, I'm sorry.
When in the period of time of living near the Landfall, have you noticed that the music is louder than it was the previous year?
You know, ma'am, I, I would not say it's incrementally louder. What I'm here trying to explain to the board, it's been a continuing problem about, of about the same magnitude for many years. In 2012, when I wrote this board first, I noted it had been going on for several years. You know, I don't have the best memory, the Estes can maybe speak to it, when they first started the entertainment. I'm guessing, you know, maybe it was 2005, but clearly 2012, 2013, 2014, it's been the same problem. Absolutely not every night, but a, a regular source of a problem.
Just one second. Could Mr. Estes come just for a couple of questions? Thank you, Mr. Crane.
Sure, thank you.
So are you familiar with the May 14 letter from Landfall Restaurant that was referenced by Mr. Crane?
Yes, I believe I had a copy of that last winter.
Do you want to have mine for the purposes of this question? Then I, my question has to do with, this is from Jim and Don Estes, and it says, for number, there are seven really offers at solving the problem that you made, and number three was, we'll be hiring a police detail every night, that there will be live music. Is that still your plan?
Yes, ma'am, and it's been that way for a few years now.
Also, I'm sorry, so did it, is it planned?
A bunch of years ago, the town of Falmouth and the chief of police made it so that you could not have a detailed police officer. The new chief came aboard and opened it up again so that you, you could hire a detailed police. And what happens is, I believe, that becomes sort of a police officer volunteers for. So if something else is going on, they've been working hard, it's not available, not everybody signs up for these things.
Okay, all, my question is only, I mean, to the extent that it's possible, every night that there is an available police officer for a detail, you will hire them for, to be at the front door from 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Is that still your intent?
Yes, ma'am, and has been for a long time.
Okay. Because it sounds like that would go a long way in keeping the, the parameters of this noise problem so that it, it's not an infraction of Mr. Crane's peaceful existence. And then the, in terms of the, it sounds like a lot of the problem is the opening of the windows. Are, are they closed for the most part, and it's just that a patron opens them every now and then, and then a manager would come over and shut it right away? Or how does that, how does it happen that noise gets out?
I think you hit it right, nailed right on the head. The doors get opened by, by the patrons, and we come along and we close them, and they open them up, and we close them, and they open them up, and we close them. There's access to the patio, there's access to the, to the waterfront.
Can something be done more than is being done now to prevent that from happening in the hours that Mr. Crane is, is talking about?
We try hard. We try real hard.
That's, I'm just saying what can be done. I'm not questioning your intent or abilities. You're saying it doesn't work all the time, and I'm just saying what can be done.
Yes.
I have two questions, I guess. So one, do you have automatic door closures on those doors?
No, we do not.
Well, why wouldn't you want to put those on there so that you don't have to go over there and police when those doors are open? I mean, it seems like a relatively modest investment to get the goodwill of your neighbor back. I guess in the second question, barring the fact that that might not work for whatever reason, how much would your business be heard if you were required to close, to stop the live entertainment at 11:00 p.m. every night?
Good question. I believe we are a, an economic engine for this area.
No question.
We employ five door people, one police officer, five bartenders, one manager, one person to clean in the morning, three to five B and members. We do this two to three nights a week for the summer. So as far as people are concerned, a lot of people would be out of work.
I'm sorry, maybe I should clarify my question. It's really stopping the entertainment at 11:00 p.m., not closing down your restaurant at 11:00 p.m. The music, in other words, that's causing the objections.
I just put three kids through college. My brother here has four children, three are in college, one's still yet to go. It helps. Everything helps. We work hard.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Your other discussion, what's?
The only. Do you want me to look at it or say it to you again?
No, the only thing I just needed to clarify, it's, my copy says it's till, let's see, midnight, Monday through Saturday, and one on Sunday. I think someone said two, and that's not the case.
Okay, I have Sundays, 1:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight.
Yes, that's what I have. Okay.
All right, and that's just for Sundays?
Well, it says place for entertainment, dining room and bar area, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Monday through Saturday. Can you, do you see the?
Just to clarify, you have two separate licenses.
Oh, I see. Okay, excuse me.
And the other four, the other days are.
Just do the one that says just Sunday, 1:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight.
Got you.
Can I clarify? That, that should say till 1:00 o'clock, I believe, Massachusetts, seven days a week till 1:00.
It does, that's what I was pointing out. You're right, thank you.
This is... I'm sorry. This is the first year I've ever had to apply for a Sunday license. For some reason, that's a new license that either the town has come up with or the state has come up with.
And Seligman Moffett was just saying the Sunday is till midnight.
It should be till 1:00.
Well, we have till 1:00.
1:00 a.m. Monday morning.
I don't know if this is a mistake, but we have Sunday entertainment, restaurant, live music. We have 1:00 p.m. till midnight, and that's just the Sunday. And then we have an entertainment license, music and dancing. We have 11:00 to 1:00 a.m., Monday through Saturday, and then Sunday, 1:00 to midnight. So they are both till midnight. That's what we have before the board.
I'm not too sure how the selectmen or whoever put those licenses in that way. We've had a liquor license till 1:00 with these bands that we've had, which mostly have been on either Friday, Saturday, or Sundays for weddings, birthdays, celebrations, bereavements, and also entertainment for young college kids, I'd say, has been going on.
We're looking for clarification.
A long time. And we've always had our bands stopped at 12:30. I could go till 1:00. Never have. We've always stopped at 12:30 to give ourselves time to have everybody use a half hour to sort of finally leave the building. I believe I have till 1:20 for everybody to leave. We have everybody out of the building by just after 1:00.
Thanks for that clarification. I mean, obviously, the main concern is, you know, that just doing what is proposed in the letter and making sure that those... You know, I think Seligman Patterson's idea of having automatic closures on the doors and everything else that you've committed to that seemed... That didn't work for those days in the past that were discussed. Did you clarify that?
It's clarified to be at midnight. So if we want to reconsider and bring this back again at 1:00, or if you think that it should even be less, or whatever your thoughts are at what time the music should end on any day of the week, is... If you have a motion to accept this as printed, or you can change this anyway, however you want to change it. Maybe you want to put a different time in here.
I would move to approve the license till 1:00, which is the applicant's request.
Okay.
I'm not inclined to agree with that. I understand...
There's no second, to 1:00.
You can second it if you want, Rebecca, but I don't agree with it.
No, there's no second to the motion. All right, if you want to make another motion.
I move that we accept the application as submitted with the 12:00 midnight closing, and that we stipulate that the doors to the outside be equipped with automatic closure so that it'll make it a little bit easier for the restaurant staff to manage the propagation of sound.
Second. Okay, you want to discuss anymore?
I think Mr. Estes would like to.
Jim Estes from Landfall. About those closures, those automatic closures during the lunch hour, dinner hour, our doors are sometimes closed, sometimes open a little bit, sometimes open a lot a bit, depending on the wind and the weather at the time. So we... As far as an automatic closure on all those doors, that might make it more difficult to have those doors open during the dining hours. So to have those would be very cumbersome and just not natural to the environment.
If I could respond to that, there are such things as door stops. Very inexpensive, work very effectively so that you can kind of compromise on having something that is easy, so that you don't have to be on top of every time and some loud young party's going on, and they want to go out and enjoy the evening on the deck with their drinks and what have you, that they're not opening those doors up and just casually walking out and not thinking about the propagation of the sound across the water. And I understand the physics that clearly. I mean, there is no question, and that can be extremely annoying. And you don't necessarily have to understand what the people are saying, but you certainly do hear the volume. So I think you have a responsibility to curtail this. I think Mr. Crane's complaints are legitimate. I, for one, believe that 11:00 p.m. is probably as late as any loud music should be played regardless, but I'll give you the 12:00 midnight. But I don't think that so far this... That you've been operating the restaurant in a way that's very considerate of your neighbors, from what I'm hearing from Mr. Crane, if his claims are, in fact, legitimate.
And do I understand the process would be to amend the license if the engineering doesn't work in accordance with the requirement of the doors? Is that the process?
If you want to make that a condition, if the board would want to make the closures a condition of the license, yeah, I think it would be an amendment, and the request of the board, did that be done?
Okay.
So it's not... I can't make it as part of the same motion?
No, you can.
Yes, I think so.
And for some reason, there's an engineering possibility.
Oh, I see.
They would have to come back with an alternative solution.
Sure.
Okay, so we're telling them how to close their doors.
Yeah, actually, one more thing before you make your vote on this, because you're making a pretty big precedent here. And you're going to get a lot of complaints this summer from the neighborhoods of restaurants that have entertainment. And next year, you're going to have no entertainment in this town after 12:00. So the town won't be too much fun for young people to come to, or people on vacation, people looking for going out and having dinner and dancing.
Are you the only establishment in Woods Hole with live entertainment amplified?
No, not at all.
All right.
We have every restaurant in Woods Hole has an entertainment license with amplified.
Well, they may have the license, but is there actually live entertain... live music?
Of course, yes. Yeah, I would say so. Yeah, we're a music community, especially Woods Hole. There's not a place down there that doesn't have music.
One more comment.
Good evening, how are you doing?
Yes.
My name's Matthew Benningoff. I'm a resident of Falmouth, and I'm also a professional musician, or was for 10 years. I played in Falmouth for... Since I graduated college in 2004, I've played in every establishment in Woods Hole and Falmouth born. I've also been working with the Estes for a very long time. There was musicians that were forming. I inherited it afterwards. And again, you have to understand that music up until a few years ago was my full-time career. I've never worked with a group that works so hard to make sure the neighbors aren't in consideration. I love the Estes, but I've actually, you know, being a musician, have... You know, I play... I should also clarify amplified music. I play mandolin. For those of you who are familiar with mandolin, you know, it's a percussion, acoustic, Italian, Irish, same engineer, and wires is the music that I play. But I play it during amplify because a mandolin is a very small body instrument.
All right, yes, we do know. Okay.
Sorry, I digress. I just want to tell you that the music, in terms of its volume at the Landfall, is monitored more closely than any singular place I've ever played in my life. In addition, they overstaff continuously to try to make sure that the doors are closed. It will be hot inside, and I'll say we should open the doors, and they will always say, no, the noise is too bad. Or if there's people lingering outside, they make sure that those people are being moved forward. They... I know several police officers who like to volunteer for that duty because they know the Estes are not only going to be there having them work the door and make sure things are good, but them and their staff are extremely professional in the way that they handle it. I personally think that having a license that starts wavering on days of the week can cause a whole lot of confusion in a lot of different areas. I think if you start having a license that says, well, it can be to 1:00 on Saturdays and Fridays, but all of a sudden on a Tuesday it can't, you're limiting the opportunity for any type of revenue to come in if someone has a wedding on, let's say, a Tuesday or a Sunday. And I think that having a continuous license at the same timeframe is good for that reason. Understanding Mr. Crane's arguments, I've never met Mr. Crane before myself, but, you know, I'm a frequent person who goes to a lot of bars, listens to a lot of music, and I can empathize with his issues. But I can tell you that the Estes really are doing everything in their power to make sure that's getting done. And then, again, the timeframe thing is really... I think it's a... I think putting days of the week in terms of ups and down times is really limiting, again, opportunities.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Crane, could I just ask you one question? When you have had the noise, as you would notice, and you would say that the doors are opening from the Landfall, I'm now being told that there's music in all the places in Woods Hole. So is it just the Landfall that creates the music, if there's music coming from other restaurants?
Well, I'm sorry to say, I strongly, strongly disagree with Mr. Estes' characterizations. There's no question that on occasion, one of the establishments may have music. Our town administrator-manager can speak to whether there are other licenses, but I adamantly disagree with his characterization, flat out, that there's regular music at other nights. But the point is very simple, and that is my complaints unquestionably can be traced to the Landfall. There has been a violation on the police record the night in question last year, when all of the promises the Estes made, at least that one night...
Yeah, okay.
But just very quickly, that, you know, Jim admitted it was a problem. By the way, it went on continuously for an hour and a half. It wasn't the doors were open and closed and policed. I don't agree with that characterization, at least that night. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our motion is from you, Mr. Patterson, saying that we are, as we would read this, "For the Landfall, Donald Estes' manager in Woods Hole is hereby granted this entertainment license to conduct music and dancing. The license is granted in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 140 of General Laws and amended by Chapter 299 in the Acts of 1926, to conduct the amusements described in connection with regular business of an inholder with the owner or the manager or the controller of a cafe, a restaurant, or other eating or drinking establishment. This license is granted as subject to the provisions of the general law and will be valid for a location that is described below. The place for entertainment is the dining room and the bar area, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Monday through Saturday, Sunday, 1:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight. Music recorded and live, all instruments, number of musicians, one to six, with amplification." So as you want... If you want to make any changes to any of that, this would be the time to do that, or accept it as printed?
I believe my motion was as printed.
Okay.
With the addition that automatic door closures be installed on those doors to the outside.
Okay. So we have door closures and as written.
One second.
Okay. Any other discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
And that's as to both the request.
That's just the entertainment.
You had a separate one for Sunday.
This is the Sunday entertainment restaurant to conduct live music. We can't have... We can't have two of them because that's a duplicate of this one.
Okay.
Here, it seems to be redundant.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so that is the music and the dancing. And then what was the other one we had for them? That's it, sir?
That would be all.
So there isn't anything for the food?
No, that was handled previously.
That's the... Okay. All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Next license is an inholders' license for In on the Sound, 313 Grand Avenue. Do we have anybody here?
Oh, we do.
This is for a lodging house license, bed and breakfast, In on the Sound. Do we have any questions for Howard? A second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Unanimous? Next item on agenda is the discussion of the Eversource Vegetation Control Methods. We have a handout from the...
It was already placed at each...
I should have a handout from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts dealing with the proposal of Eversource to how they are going to try to deal with the vegetation growth. And we have received a draft of what... A letter that has been sent to by town of Bourne as a possibility and requested that we consider submitting a similar letter. I would like to see if there's some public comment before we get into our discussion. Is there someone from the public who'd like to discuss this? Please state your name.
My name is Janet Clover, recent nine. I represent Green Cape, the Green Center, and Falmouth Climate Action Team. I don't think any of you were here back in 2008 when 15 Cape towns passed resolutions to stop the herbicide spraying by NSTAR. All 15 towns agreed to this. Now, NSTAR is back, and they want to start... They are starting spraying again. It's got to stop. They're poisoning our aquifer. We're spending all this money on a new waste... New treat... Water treatment filtration plant. And what are we doing? We're going to pour pesticides into the ground? That's ridiculous. There's no reason NSTAR can't cut and mow. They will give you the song and dance about we go out with little backpacks and spray here and spray there. That's not true. They have a contractor do it. It's not supervised. They do it on windy days, and it's bad. There's no reason for it. And I think Falmouth needs to take the position that we're not going to allow it. And I would request that the board send the same letter as Bourne did to the governor, M.D.A.R., and Secretary Beaton. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Sue Phalen. I'm the director of Green Cape. On March 24th, I forwarded a letter to this board along with the Bourne letter, and I'd be happy to submit the hard copy to you.
We have the Bourne.
Okay. But I also appended a message to the board with my... With our request. Thank you. And thank you for passing our previous resolution back in 2011. But we've experienced several spraying violations throughout the Cape from that time, and the citizens of Falmouth need to be protected from any further harm, you know, from NSTAR, who strips the land and also then sprays residential private properties frequently without the knowledge or consent of the owners. And this is happening on Falmouth town-owned properties... And this is happening on Falmouth town-owned properties as well. The spraying threatens public health and the only source of drinking water on the Cape. And it's been estimated that the NSTAR, I'm still gonna call them NSTAR even though they've changed their name to EverSource. Their power line rights-of-way interface with 75% of Falmouth's Zone 2s, the zones of contribution to the water supply wells. So that alone should provide impetus to the board to err on the side of caution to ensure the health of your residents and your, and the aquifer. This problem really begs for local control and not contractors coming from off Cape who aren't familiar with the areas, they don't carry maps frequently, and are not familiar with the unusual wind velocities. There are very little time during the daytime when the herbicides can be safely sprayed and not drift, maybe 6:00 in the morning when it's pretty low. NSTAR is paid to deliver power, not pollution, but these recent patterns of cutting and spraying violations around the Cape and the lack of enforcement of the regulations with these, the safety of your residents cannot be ensured. And it's clear that unfortunately, the state system is broken as well. The regulations are not being enforced, and we've seen that several times this year, this past year. In addition, current EPA policy regarding pesticides and regulations haven't caught up with the science. So standard pesticide spray practices are not sufficient to protect Falmouth residents. Just last week, the World Health Organization announced one of the herbicides that NSTAR sprays on local rights-of-way was reclassified as a probable human carcinogen. But NSTAR still plans to proceed with their plan regardless. So I think it would be very appropriate and justified for this board to send comments on the yearly operational plan to the regulator of Mass Department of Agricultural Resources before the May 11th deadline. But, and this is most important, also seek the immediate revocation of the five-year vegetation management plan from the Governor and EEA Secretary Matt Beaton, as the Town of Bourne has done, and investigate reasonable means to accomplish the same goals of keeping the rights-of-way clear, means that would still ensure the purity of the water and the health of your residents. The revocation of the plan, the vegetation management plan is, covers a longer period of time. It goes from 2013 to 2017. So if you seek that revocation, that buys every community some breathing time where they can, they can research alternative means of keeping these power lines clear and possibly working together and plan the use of alternative, non-chemical methods for keeping, we all agree that the lines have to be kept clear. There's no controversy there. It's the manner of the clearing that is really, has been very harmful. So again, I would ask you to follow the leadership of the Town of Bourne and please request, in addition to making comments on the yearly operational plan, request that revocation of the five-year plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Jude?
It's nice to be here tonight. I won't say a whole lot.
Just introduce yourself for this, actually.
Oh, my name is Jude Wilber. I live in Precinct Nine. I live in Hatchville. I have property that is, has an easement by NSTAR, whom EverSource. And if none of the Board of Selectmen have seen my easement, I personally invite you all out to look at what is there three and a half years after NSTAR walked away from it, okay? I am an associate of Sue and Janet, and I support their arguments for spraying and controlled spraying or ghost spraying and have for years. However, the vegetation control by cutting and trimming is not what is going on, okay? This is what is being said, but this is not what's going on. As standard language of every easement agreement, there is the codicil that the, the holder of the easement cannot deny the landowner the use and enjoyment of the property. They cannot waste and strip. That is the critical clause. They cannot leave a dangerous terrain. And this is what has happened, if you wanna go down R O W, right-of-way 345 throughout Falmouth. It is the single most ugly gash on the Cape, okay? And I, that's what I wanna say, I, there's two issues here, and what we, I don't think, I think that we've discussed that we don't wanna have NSTAR playing spraying off against ravaging cutting, but that's not the choice. I will say this, that I have contacted and been in discussion with Dave Viera, who back in 2012 held discussions with the Mashpee Concom and the Falmouth Concom to seek alternatives to stop this in a fashion that is mutually agreeable to the landowners and to the easement holder. And that Dave and I have made an agreement that after town meeting, we are going to move this forward in terms of partnerships between the easement holder and the landholder. Such that the landholders or groups of landholders maintain the easement to the specifications of the easement holder. This would involve binding covenants, which would in no way override the basic easement law, which would be attached to them. And it is in, it is in NSTAR's own documents that they will enter into such agreements. They prefer not to because if the agreements are not held up, that opens up problems and potential litigation. However, out on the outer Cape in Brewster and Harwich, volunteers without covenants with the easement holder have maintained the right-of-ways to specifications for two years. And this is what Dave and I are going to try to move this forward in a positive fashion. Right now, it's just headbutting and has been for a very long time. However, I think that what happened in Falmouth and Hatchville in 2011 has changed the general opinion of how this corporation works and deals with it. It is, as has been mentioned, there's essentially no oversight. There's no oversight by the Falmouth Conservation Commission, there's no oversight at the state level, I mean, that's really a joke. And there's no oversight at the federal level, okay? There's no, there's no oversight by NSTAR on their subcontractors. There's no oversight at all, okay? And they will deny this, that, oh, we didn't need oversight. You know, we told them what to do, they went and did it. So, you know, there's a real problem here with a corporation this large and this powerful, with a, with a whole lot of political influence, not living up to its responsibilities that they have codified in their own, in their own records. Finally, I just wanted to point out, I noticed the mission statement for the Board of Selectmen, having been a three-time loser, I know quite a bit about the board, but your mission statement says that, the primary mission statement says, "Professional quality and accountable service to the community." And it also says, "Responsive to community issues and concerns." This is a major community issue, concerns. There are thousands of people in this town who are affected by, by these ROWs and the way they're being, they're being treated. And finally, at the bottom says, "Environmental stewardship," okay? And there's a couple other in between there. But I'm pleased that the board has brought this up, has chosen to bring this up. I see this as a first and positive step, working toward what I hope is eventually partnerships and covenants whereby the land is maintained to specifications by groups and that NSTAR doesn't have to even come by, except to say, "Thank you very much." And I think that that's the way that Dave and I have agreed to work forward on this. So I thank you very much for bringing this up, for taking this up. I would strongly suggest that you follow the recommendations of Sue and Janet with regard to considering that letter that Bourne has sent. Bourne has been subject to much the same as Falmouth and as Mashpee and Barnstable, et cetera. So I thank you very much.
I have two questions for you. One is, this letter does not, I mean, it does mention that preferred would be selective cutting and power mowing. Would you recommend that we add another sentence to that saying, "Now, we don't mean like you did in 2011 where you came in clear cut"? I mean, should we get into that distinction?
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, what they tell you when they give you their little cutting card is, this is what it's gonna look like. And then what they leave is not that. In the case of my property, they stripped the topsoil. So there's no problem of spraying or cutting ever again. You know, I have, as a sedimentologist, I have my own little sedimentological experiment going on
That's why they did it, just for years.
Down in my valley where I'm measuring erosion and deposition and have been for three years. So, you know, I kinda like that, but I'd rather, I'd rather have some blueberry bushes down there, which are acceptable to, to, to high bush blueberries or any of those sort of grass, let's say, or anything like that. But, yeah, the destructive, the waste, waste and strip would be the thing to put in the letter, that this is, this is a standard clause in all easement law, and it cannot be violated. And you cannot violate the landowner's right to enjoy their property for recreational or agricultural or any other sort of purpose.
And the second question is apparently a minor one, but in the Bourne letter, they're using pesticide and herbicide kind of synonymously. My understanding is herbicide, we're talking plants, pesticide, we're talking animals. Really, this should be only specified?
Herbicide is primarily for plants. Pesticide, it covers primarily insects and things like that that are
The issue, really, we're talking about here is herbicide, is it?
Herbicides.
The EPA defines pesticide
Yeah, Jim, sorry. Yeah, to cover the mic. Is it, it's the more general term?
Yeah, the EPA defines pesticide as the umbrella term that covers insecticides, herbicides, fungicides, or any side at all.
Okay, of something that's annoying.
So you could use the terms interchangeably and still be correct.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. Any, yep?
Hi, my name is Lydia Manter, and I am from Bourne. And I came out tonight because I wanted to convey to you how important it is that you consider writing a letter similar to what the Town of Bourne did. I am one of the residents in Bourne, and I just wanted to share with you, and I promised to be brief, what led to that letter. We had many residents that lived next to two of the right-of-ways in Bourndale that had written to the Selectmen and come forward and had reported concerns about being exposed to the herbicides that NSTAR had sprayed directly into their yards or homes. My family had concerns about ingesting the herbicides. We had children that ate food from the gardens, the yards, and from the right-of-ways. And we also had concerns about the municipal wells and how they would be affected, as well as some of the private wells. We had really severe problems. And it turns out that many of the neighbors there had medical problems and symptoms that were consistent with herbicide exposure, and we went to the Selectmen about that. The sad thing was, when this was reported to Mass Department of Agricultural Resources, not, they did not investigate anything, and they would not test the water in this residential area. It was terrible. We went to the county, it was the same thing. Nobody knew what to do with us. And it's still that way. We still don't know to this minute what effects or long-term effects we might have based on the exposure that we received. And during some of that time, we weren't even aware that we had been where they had sprayed because they didn't tell us. So that was one of, one of the things. The other issue also was, it came to our knowledge with NSTAR, that they said it wasn't more cost-effective to do the spraying. And so the Town of Bourne also was thinking about alternative methods of keeping those lines clear. I've lived, I've been in the butter to that, one of the right-of-ways since 1982. They'd come out once every eight years, they would cut and trim, and that would be about the end of it. Similar to the way Algonquin Gas maintains their rights-of-way where the gas line is, and they haven't used herbicides since the late 80s for that reason, because this is so close to the residential homes. The other issue also was the fact that there, because there are private property owners involved, and the Town of Bourne and some of the private property owners had the same controlling easement, which was, they reserved the right to cultivate the land. And so now, we couldn't mean to have gardens or chickens or organic or whatever we wanted to do. So that was, you know, another reason that the pesticide board regulations are very short-sighted. They keep forgetting that private individuals own the land. Mine in particular, my easement states to cut, trim, and de-lim. It was very specific, so I didn't have a problem directly on my property. So when NSTAR became aware of all this, they did agree not to spray this right-of-way because of some, of some of these issues, but I would ask you to strongly consider doing something similar.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Just, I'm just picturing as you're speaking. Are you on this side of the bridge? Or do you go over the bridge?
I am on
For the area that you're talking about?
No, we're on the Plymouth side.
Okay.
But we're part of Bourne and part of
Yes, yes, I understand that. But there's just many times in discussing Bourne, whether we're discussing
Oh, sure, yeah, it was the Buzzard Bay Water District that was mostly
Okay.
Yeah, the concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does it work, Phil? Do we have enough information to make some decisions?
If I could, I just wanted to punctuate a couple of things.
Is it something new? I mean
Yes, it is. Yeah, a little bit of an exclamation point, that these are not mute points. Somebody mentioned that one of them, and that's actually glyphosate. It's in Roundup, the one that now the World Health Organization is saying is a probable human carcinogen. They upgraded it. One of the other ones that NSTAR uses is contaminated during the process with a known human carcinogen, formaldehyde. There is other ones that are endocrine disruptors, there's other ones that damage the brain. These are a lot of things that are not in the current regulations, how, what you can use, but these things are real. And I'm telling you this because I'm a civil engineer, I did a lot of work in stormwater on the Cape. The other one is there are things that are ingredients added, and one of those is an emerging contaminant of concern on the Cape, very close to what the EPA calls is a advisory, provisional advisory health device, you know? And that's an added ingredient, and it's called the perfluorinated chemicals, PFOS, some of those. I don't know if anybody's aware of those. In groundwater, one of them has a half-life of 43 years. Another one has a half-life of 90 years. They are a concern internationally, and those were put in pesticides as one of the unknowns in the compound. So you have what they call an active ingredient, which might be the, the, it used to be the diazepam, which got taken off the market, but there's other things that are in there. And these can be as harmful or worse, and they're unknown. And 80s and in the early 90s that people bring this stuff into their houses. You put it out there, it's in your house, and then you're repetitively contaminated by it. Just wanted to say that these are not moot. And all of that land, most of it, a lot of it the town owns, and the town maybe should take a look at what, how they want to manage it and what their deeds say. And also the other ones, a lot of the residential property is on the residential landowner's land. It is not on NSTAR's land.
Thank you.
What is the board's pleasure?
Do we, you remember when NSTAR came that evening and gave us the discussion about their spraying? And I just remember it, that I just did not understand what he was saying. And it didn't change a thing. All we were asking was not to use any chemicals and it didn't happen. But there was an organization that was there in the Harwich area, I believe, that wanted us to join that evening. And I think that many of the towns on the Cape belonged to that organization. But I definitely agree with this, so wherever we want to go with it.
I'll make a motion that we send a letter similar to what Bourne has done, seeking revocation of the vegetation management plan and making a statement also about no wasting and stripping.
Are you okay with the town administration and I reacting to that letter?
I am.
Close enough to this without having to come back here?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Will that draft be available?
Certainly, once we draft and send it out, it'll be public record. But our idea is to try to get this done quickly enough. We're not going to have time, we're not going to be able to discuss it next week at our meetings at town meeting.
They'll read your email.
I'm not going to edit it, I just want...
But they'll read your email.
No, once it's done, we'll put it on the website so it's available. But I think our hope is to get this in the mail on Thursday or Friday and with a draft based pretty much on what the Bourne is, with potentially a letter saying, however delicately we can, "Don't do what you did in 2011 in response to us telling you not to spray. Please don't come back and attack us because of that." All clear?
Motion in a second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed, non-unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda is to discuss and approve, a vote to approve a remote participation policy. The way I'd like to, I know there's some people who'd like to discuss this. The way I'd like to run this is if there's public comment first, basically then closed public comment and have a board discussion. So is there anyone from the audience who'd like to comment on the potential remote participation policy? Mr. DeFray?
Adrian DeFray, resident of town of Falmouth and a very concerned citizen on this type of an issue. A couple of years ago, the Board of Selectmen voted to go every other week. In our former government, the people want to witness what goes on right away. Now we're asking to be able to, that you be able to do your duties remotely. When we elect you as selectman, we put our confidence in you to be aware and be present and present to us, the citizens, a lot of people watching on TV, some come into this room. So I have a concern in which direction the Board of Selectmen are going. And personally, I don't think you paid enough. I think it should be $5,000 a year, that's $100 bucks a night. But I think it should go back to one a week. And what I'm witnessing tonight with this discussion that you people are going to have, I think that properly belongs before town meeting. It should not be a decision of the Board of Selectmen to continue to shorten your availability to present to the citizens of the town of Falmouth. We're in a $42 million-plus corporation. And there's a lot of us in the town of Falmouth who are very concerned in the direction of the town. And I'm asking you on, in this particular discussion tonight, to not vote this policy. If you have a serious reason why, put something together, bring it before town meeting, let the legislative body hear every reason why we should not be aware and why you should be able to not be here to cast your votes a and a. Your actions, we depend on your actions and your comments when you come up for reelection. And we, you know, I know every once in a while I may expound, but I'm seriously concerned about where the Board of Selectmen is going under this charter that we now have. And again, I'm going to repeat, we have a $42 million-plus corporation and we depend on you, the elected officials. And I don't want to see or hear a comment that, "Well, you know, I had a headache and I couldn't make the meeting." And I don't know if that was going to be the discussion. I wanted to hear exactly what rationale that you people were going to use to say, "Oh, we're going to have a remote participation in town government." Back when I was in office, you know, we met every day and it was an open session every day with two reporters sitting out in the hallway. So people knew exactly what was going on every day. And now it's every other week. It used to be every week. Now it's every other week. So I'm a little concerned with this policy that you're going to be discussing. And I really am concerned with where you're going.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McNamara?
Thank you, Matt McNamara. Thank you very much for holding this for a week for comment. I know that there has been comment because somehow people have got my emails and sent copies to me. Doug, thank you very much for taking the time Wednesday after the Precinct 7 meeting to chat a bit about this. So I said it a lot last week and I just want to supplement a couple of pieces. The AG's regulations, which your policy isn't far afield from at all, one of the important parts, and I mentioned it the last time, I want to reinforce it, says that with this vote, if you were to approve the remote participation, that policy would then apply to all subsequent meetings of all local bodies in the town of Falmouth. Every one of them, every body that's subject to the open meeting law, whether it's the library trustees, whether it's the solid waste advisory committee, whether it's the energy committee, they will all be subject to that policy. Now, some of these folks meet in obscure places like the third-floor conference room. The first-floor conference room, the old water department downstairs tonight at the same time as this meeting, is the Board of Health in the Civil Defense Room. There is no technological capabilities in any of those rooms. Now, one of the emails that I get a copy of was directed to Julian saying, "What's it going to cost?" And I know that at the November 2014 meeting, Judy Fenwick had asked a question about the $42,000 grant that we're getting as a return from Comcast or NSTAR or whatever to upgrade this room. And in Julian's response to Judy, it was, "This room is well beyond its useful life and broken," even including the location of the seats and the tables, and that if it's going to cost $42,000 just to upgrade this room, and it was commented on, that to allow us to make PowerPoint presentations, et cetera. If a person was remotely participating this evening, that person would have been deprived of this PowerPoint presentation, would have been deprived of Cindy Amos' pictures of the St. Patrick's sign request, would have been deprived of a lot of information that might not have been available in advance to be given to that person. So I think you've got some technological challenges above and beyond the fact of whether or not it's really necessary or needed. Now, I know in the Cape Cod Times, Pat Flynn always commented about, "Well, we're using it at the county, the county commissioners, take a look, it's working fine." Well, I took her up on it, and I did. And I encourage you to watch the video of the most recent county commissioners' meeting in a room much smaller than this, where Pat did participate remotely. And it was interesting that during that participation, she said, "I can't hear the people in the room." So I would encourage you, at least until we have a better handle on the many locations that need to be upgraded, the upgrading of this room itself, that you put off this policy because it will affect every open body in this town. Thank you.
Yep, Kathy?
Kathleen Murray, Precinct 1. And again, I'm not speaking as the observer. I read the policy as you presented on the website quite thoroughly, and I think it answers all the questions. Any policy sometime can be changed in the future if you see that there is a problem with it. But I think it does answer, it doesn't require you to use remote. It offers the possibility of it. And I think in this technological age, it's a very good option to offer to people. And I approve of it with them, and you may need to change it in the future. Thank you.
Mark Fenner in Precinct 6. Matt made mention of Pat not having the ability to hear the people in the room. And I'm going to mention this again, like I mentioned last week. I had the ability to be here and hear the people in the room debate this somewhat at length a couple of years ago, and I believe it was five-nothing against, and I kind of just wonder what changed. Thanks.
Matt?
Matt Hanley, Thomas Villanueva Road. I'm against this. I think we have a great form of government. We have multiple boards that sit and hear the people. Just because people aren't in this room doesn't mean they're not watching on the TV. I get emails and letters and stop on the street all the time for the comments that I make in front of the planning board, in front of this board at town meeting, and they thank me for my words. So I think it's important that the selectmen and all our boards are there in person. If a selectman or a board cannot have a quorum, they need to start having alternatives. The alternative members, this is a great way for people to learn how to become a selectman. There's a lot, I know from experience, because the last like four or five years, politics have been forced on me. I've had to learn mass general law, mass statutes, I've had to learn all the regulations that go into governing of the town. And to become a selectman and sit in the position where you guys are right now, it's not easy because you are basically held to hold, to know and understand these rules that you're in charge of enforcing. So if you could have alternative people as selectmen, they get to learn by watching or they get to learn by filling in when the selectmen aren't capable of fulfilling their position. So that's what we should really be looking at. This remote policy, I feel that there's already a consolidation of power in this town. And by doing this remotely, then those people are keeping their power. If you have alternatives, alternative members, alternative members are held by the same rules and regulations that all of you are held by, to do what's best for the town of Falmouth. So I'm thoroughly against remote participation. And I think it's really important that I can look everyone in the eye that's in charge of making the decisions in this town. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Are we ready to have our discussion?
I'd say that the written, the emails were about the same, you know, in terms of for and against when we saw community input. So that was reflected from my, from what I received as well.
Tim, Becky, do you want to make a comment?
Yes, I guess I would like to make a comment. I have experienced remote communication and I've also, I've seen it used in two ways. One in deliberation and then the other one, just used where you have a resource in another state who's got personal experiences they want to share as information for you to make your decision. I'm perfectly comfortable with the latter. It's actually quite valuable to get other people's experience relayed to you for the sake of your deliberation. I'm actually growing in my discomfort for using, for implementing this remote participation policy. I remember dealing on a government contract with subcontractors remotely. And I'll have to tell you that the, that the lack of commitment between the parties that became obvious after that meeting, if you will, was very distressing to me. People don't take you as seriously if you're not looking them eye to eye, as Mr. Hanley has just mentioned. That personal interaction is something, is part of human chemistry. And I must admit, I've become uneasy with this policy. And I also, as Mr. McNamara has pointed out, we really don't have a very good way of controlling the quality of the technology and the ability to communicate both within the room and to that remote person back and forth. So I'm worried about how we can control the quality, if you will, enforce the policy once it leaves. You know, maybe the Board of Selectmen could do it. We've got, we're like a fishbowl, everybody's looking at us and they kind of see the dynamics of what's going on. But that's not true of many of the committees that don't have televised broadcast of their deliberation. And I must admit, I'm now pretty much skeptical as to whether we really should go ahead and implement this at this point. Maybe someday we'll have all of the rooms set up with the kind of interactive technology that would make that eye-to-eye contact a little bit less, or the lack of eye-to-eye contact, a little bit less of a barrier to effective communication. When I say effective communication, that you get the commitment by the other party to do what you've agreed to, that you're going to do, you know? So that's where I am right now.
All clear?
I thought it was really a good idea. Because if you didn't have a quorum and there was someone, say, maybe not even in town, that could listen to the conversation and could vote. And when I read from Mr. Duffy that you cannot use it for a quorum, changed my mind. Because the purpose, and I'm just going to give a personal thing that happened. The last two weeks, in March, I was not here. There was an emergency and I was out of state and I was in a very emotional kind of a situation there with a family member. If we had the opportunity and I was away and it was remote, I could not have sat down and had a conversation because I was away from it too long. There is something about the rhythm of being a selectman, and you do it each day, and you're reading emails and you're getting into information from other people and you're having other meetings. Being away from this table and wherever you might be is not going to be happening. It's not going to be a good thing to have a remote and think you can be brought up to date. I mean, I attended one other meeting right after I came back and I was lost. I didn't have that same rhythm. And so when you're away from it, you do need a time to pick it up. And when you're away from it, you're thinking of other things. And so one was the fact of emotionally what it's like to do that. And the other is, I didn't realize all town committees could have this. I thought it was just for selectmen. So there's two things that I learned. You cannot use it for a quorum and it is for committees beyond selectmen, so I would not, I would not approve of it.
I looked for some ways of fine-tuning it that I was hoping might work, but maybe we could just use it for executive session. Because I think one of the concerns that's been raised is the appearance of closed is not a good thing. And even if we're doing remotely and we're all the way open, but we appear to close, I'm very concerned about that. The executive already is closed, but we can't limit to that. I was hoping we could limit, saying that the Board of Selectmen could just try it and see how it goes, but we can't do that either. My other option was maybe someone could participate...
My other option was maybe someone could participate remotely but not vote. And so they could, if they have insight, knowledge, because they've been on the board for many years, be able to at least say their, you know, say this is the information I have, this is a question I would ask the person there, so they could listen and talk, but because they weren't in the room, you know, but we're not allowed to put that restriction in there either.
Right.
And so, you know, if we could have done some of those things, I might have been more willing to consider it. But I do agree that being in the room with the people talking is an important part of it. Town meeting and the Board of Selectmen is a long, longstanding part of our democracy and I like it the way it is and I hope we actually resist the technology changing it that much. Maybe ultimately we'll all be on Skype and, you know, we'll be here virtually as opposed to really, but I'd rather have us to be here really.
I think so. I think so.
So now, I don't have a motion to approve the policy. So we take no action on that. We have one item on our agenda, otherwise I'd suggest we take a little break, but I think we can move it forward.
I think we can hold our breath, keep going.
The next item is a clarification of the special town meeting, Article 7, still a special legislation. And this actually came up at our precinct meeting at McQuaid. And with a question that came up at the meeting, and thank you, Howard, for raising the question, realized that we really did need to have some clarity and that the article that we had put forward was changing, adding many other seasonal residencies to the home, to the tax, the rooms' tax at a 6% rate, while our current rate is 4%. And it was unclear whether they would only be charged 6% while the current place would be slated for, whether we're going to try to get everyone up to 6. And I think the general feeling would be much cleaner and understandable to say that we're going to add these other places at the 4% rate and everyone across the board is 4%. And if in the future we think 6% is the right rate, that will be a different, completely different issue and motion, which we can also do without having to do special legislation. And so, thank you for asking the question, I think it was great clarity.
It's good.
Is there any other discussion you want to have on this?
No, I think so.
Yep.
Sorry, Jack Goldstone, Precinct 4, I just have a quick question. The special legislation refers specifically to vacation, but, and for stays less than 90 days, but obviously there are many research institutions where we have visitors for periods of time that are less than 90 days. And I'm just thinking specifically about that we have a number of visitors coming this summer, for example. They're not here for vacation, they're here for work. But that, does this applies to, it just applies to every, every residence that is renting out regardless of its purpose?
I read it as vacation or leisure accommodation, that for work is not. For employment, I would not interpret it that way.
Okay, thank you.
And I think what I would suggest that we do on Monday night, or I guess this will be Tuesday night, is to, since we make the motion on the floor, that we make the motion with this motion that clarifies that it's at the same rate as commercial accommodations, so at the 4% rate.
I think we have a consensus, do you need something, some action on this?
I guess I do, would want a motion that that can be the motion that I made on Tuesday night, as you see in front of you, that it would be at the same rate as the town taxes commercial accommodations, which is the 4% rate.
Then I move that we amend the article as specified here as written, at town meeting, I guess I should say.
The good thing is that will make it the main motion as opposed to amendment, that the, the main motion becomes that, it's not really amendment. So there can still be two other amendments if they so choose.
Yep.
Okay.
And we have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, unanimous. Okay, next up is the individual selectmen's report. Sue, I think you have it.
Oh yeah, I just wanted to call to folks' attention, there's an opportunity to comment on the draft recommendations of the Coastal Erosion Commission that expires tomorrow at 5:00 PM. You can find the information on the official site of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and read the report and make comments if you like. As a member of the Capewide Beach Committee, the committee did make comments, so those are, will also be available from Cape Cod Commission. And then yesterday, I attended the Regional Transportation Plan Focus Group and I brought some copies, if anyone wants to look at them. One of the important items that Catherine Bumpus brought up, for example, one of the comments might be with regard to tankers that are traveling along our roads. We see very recently from the Born Rotary what can happen when there, you know, when there are a lot of tankers and there are, there's an opportunity to comment until, I think it's April 20th on that, so there's a little bit more time. But the commission is really trying to, you know, take the man on the street, so to speak, and get more information. They have a budget of money they're going to spend and they wanted to know from folks, recommendations on where to put most of the money. So I'll just leave copies of these in the, with the attendant at the front door if anyone's interested.
Russ?
Yes, I guess it was Tuesday of last week, I had the pleasure of representing the town in my capacity as selectman at the Falmouth Police Department, new officer induction and also officer special awards ceremony. It was a pleasure to participate that, or welcome four new officers onto the force, but also to recognize the, beyond the call, or beyond the required performance of duty that our officers frequently put out and being recognized for some of those activities. One that comes immediately to mind is assisting in the shooting that occurred up in Born on, off of Roundhouse Road where, you know, a woman was killed and an officer was shot, Born Officer was shot. But our force responded to that situation as a aid agreement that we have with the surrounding communities and participated in a very dangerous situation to try to get it under control. And we're instrumental in helping that. The other thing I participated in this last week was the Friends of Knobscall Light Organization meeting, of the group that's basically going to be spearheading, you know, the recreation of the Knobscall Light facility and something that's more of a museum and an opportunity to actually exhibit. But also will be taking over a lot of the maintenance and restoration that's required to maintain that Knobscall Light facility and the house that's adjacent to it. And I think they're even talking about with the, an agreement, negotiating agreement with the Coast Guard of expanding the parking lot so that we're not limited to just those few spaces that are right off the road there. And I know I've driven by there without a town company, wanting to stop only to see the place completely jammed with cars, and then where do you go then? I mean, it's a, so they're going to, they're looking at a number of options, but that organizing is going on and should yield what should be a spectacular opportunity for the town and all of its visitors as well. And I too, joined the Precinct 7 meeting last week on Thursday night, and I'll be going to precinct meetings all week.
I think we probably did basically the same. We were at the police department.
Yeah, we certainly were.
We were at Precinct 7. We were, just about the same.
I will remind people that we have precinct meetings coming up, the Precinct 4 meeting is tomorrow night, 4/7, and then, I guess we don't have, and then Precincts 8 and 9 are on Wednesday night, and then Precincts 1, 2, 3, and 5 and 6 are all on Thursday night. While I was out in the hallway, I did pick up a piece of information, just to remind people that the hazardous waste collection is happening in Sandwich on April 18th. And this is our last meeting until then, so if you have it. And remember, that is open to all Falmouth residents to bring any of your hazardous waste, any of your paints, polishes, stains, chemicals, cleaners, auto fluids and mercury. And that is the way we'd like you to get rid of things, not take it, put it out in your household trash or take it to the dump, but take it up to Sandwich. It won't be until Falmouth, until June 20th is when you can bring it to Falmouth High School. Town members' report?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chairman. The meetings of the past week were very deftly summarized by other members of the board. I do want to note one other item that I and several staff members and I think some members of the Board of Selectmen will be attending the Cape Cod Commission 208 Planning Meeting, which has been set for 8:30 AM at the Mashpee Library on Thursday, April 9th. So Thursday will indeed be a very busy day, including the five precinct meetings that same evening. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our adjourn.